[END OF TRANSCRIPT] Good afternoon and welcome to the City of Battle Creek, Michigan, in the Battle Creek Good afternoon and welcome to the City of Battle Creek, Michigan, in the Battle Creek Good afternoon and welcome to the City of Battle Creek, Michigan, in the Battle Creek Good afternoon and welcome to the City of Battle Creek, Michigan in the Battle Creek City Commission meeting, a special meeting for August 7, 2025. We thank you for tolerating City Commission meeting, a special meeting for August 7, 2025. We thank you for tolerating City Commission meeting, a special meeting for August 7, 2025. We thank you for tolerating City Commission meeting, a special meeting for August 7, 2025. We thank you for tolerating our daytime jobs got in the way a little bit. We're going to call a roll call and have our daytime jobs got in the way a little bit. We're going to call a roll call and have our daytime jobs got in the way a little bit. We're going to call a roll call and have our daytime jobs got in the way a little bit. We're going to call a roll call and have our clerk take the roll at this period of time. Is Chris Simmons hooked up electronically our clerk take the roll at this period of time. Is Chris Simmons hooked up electronically our clerk take the roll at this period of time. Is Chris Simmons hooked up electronically our clerk take the roll at this period of time. Is Chris Simmons hooked up electronically or not? or not? or not? or not?
No. 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 No.
Not yet. Not yet. Not yet. Not yet.
Okay. Very good. Vicki, if you could call the roll. Okay. Very good. Vicki, if you could call the roll. Okay. Very good. Vicki, if you could call the roll. Okay. Very good. Vicki, if you could call the roll.
Mayor Mark Benke. Mayor Mark Benke. Mayor Mark Benke. Mayor Mark Benke.
Here. 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 Here.
Commissioner Paige Ketersky-Smith. Commissioner Paige Ketersky-Smith. Commissioner Paige Ketersky-Smith. Commissioner Paige Ketersky-Smith.
Here. 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 Here.
Commissioner Jessica Lacoss. Commissioner Jessica Lacoss. Commissioner Jessica Lacoss. Commissioner Jessica Lacoss.
Here. 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 Here.
Commissioner Janesa Morris. Commissioner Janesa Morris. Commissioner Janesa Morris. Commissioner Janesa Morris.
Here. 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 Here.
Commissioner Patrick O'Donnell. Commissioner Patrick O'Donnell. Commissioner Patrick O'Donnell. Commissioner Patrick O'Donnell.
Here. 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 Here.
Vice Mayor Sherri Sophia. Vice Mayor Sherri Sophia. Vice Mayor Sherri Sophia. Vice Mayor Sherri Sophia.
Here. 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 Here.
And Commissioner Carla Reynolds and Commissioner Jim Lance were not able to be here today, And Commissioner Carla Reynolds and Commissioner Jim Lance were not able to be here today, And Commissioner Carla Reynolds and Commissioner Jim Lance were not able to be here today, And Commissioner Carla Reynolds and Commissioner Jim Lance were not able to be here today, but they may join us electronically as may Commissioner Christopher Simmons. but they may join us electronically as may Commissioner Christopher Simmons. but they may join us electronically as may Commissioner Christopher Simmons. but they may join us electronically as may Commissioner Christopher Simmons.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. You're welcome. You're welcome. You're welcome.
Next item on the agenda is Resolution 206. Madam Clerk, when you're ready. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 206. Madam Clerk, when you're ready. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 206. Madam Clerk, when you're ready. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 206. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
A resolution seeking to set a closed session to review confidential employment applications A resolution seeking to set a closed session to review confidential employment applications A resolution seeking to set a closed session to review confidential employment applications A resolution seeking to set a closed session to review confidential employment applications for the position of city manager for August 7, 2025. for the position of city manager for August 7, 2025. for the position of city manager for August 7, 2025. for the position of city manager for August 7, 2025.
Moved to approve Resolution 206. Moved to approve Resolution 206. Moved to approve Resolution 206. Moved to approve Resolution 206.
Support. 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 Support.
The move and supported to approve Resolution 206. Are there any comments by the commission? The move and supported to approve Resolution 206. Are there any comments by the commission? The move and supported to approve Resolution 206. Are there any comments by the commission? The move and support to approve Resolution 206. Are there any comments by the commission? Seanum, would you please call the vote or electronically? Thanks. Seanum, would you please call the vote or electronically? Thanks. Seanum, would you please call the vote or electronically? Thanks. Seanum, would you please call the vote or electronically? Thanks. Resolution 206 has been approved. 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 Next item on our agenda is general public comment. Is there any public comment at this Next item on our agenda is general public comment. Is there any public comment at this Next item on our agenda is general public comment. Is there any public comment at this Next item on our agenda is general public comment. Is there any public comment at this time? Yes, Autumn Smith. time? Yes, Autumn Smith. time? Yes, Autumn Smith. time? Yes, Autumn Smith.
I'd like to make it noted, you did not open with the pledge. Moving on, I want to I'd like to make it noted, you did not open with the pledge. Moving on, I want to I'd like to make it noted, you did not open with the pledge. Moving on, I want to I'd like to make it noted, you did not open with the pledge. Moving on, I want to thank you for allowing public input on the selection of our next city manager, one of thank you for allowing public input on the selection of our next city manager, one of thank you for allowing public input on the selection of our next city manager, one of thank you for allowing public input on the selection of our next city manager, one of the most important decisions this body will make. However, I feel compelled to voice deep the most important decisions this body will make. However, I feel compelled to voice deep the most important decisions this body will make. However, I feel compelled to voice deep the most important decisions this body will make. However, I feel compelled to voice deep concerns about some of the finalists currently being considered. They come with some serious concerns about some of the finalists currently being considered. They come with some serious concerns about some of the finalists currently being considered. They come with some serious concerns about some of the finalists currently being considered. They come with some serious baggage and red flags about their judgment, transparency, and ability to uphold the trust baggage and red flags about their judgment, transparency, and ability to uphold the trust baggage and red flags about their judgment, transparency, and ability to uphold the trust baggage and red flags about their judgment, transparency, and ability to uphold the trust of this community. First, Amanda Zimmerlin from Clayton, Ohio, has a troubling record of this community. First, Amanda Zimmerlin from Clayton, Ohio, has a troubling record of this community. First, Amanda Zimmerlin from Clayton, Ohio, has a troubling record of this community. First, Amanda Zimmerlin from Clayton, Ohio, has a troubling record of allegedly disregarding governing authorities, concealing information about residential development, of allegedly disregarding governing authorities, concealing information about residential development, of allegedly disregarding governing authorities, concealing information about residential development, of allegedly disregarding governing authorities, concealing information about residential development, and making inappropriate comments that may have put her city at risk. Even more concerning, and making inappropriate comments that may have put her city at risk. Even more concerning, and making inappropriate comments that may have put her city at risk. Even more concerning, and making inappropriate comments that may have put her city at risk. Even more concerning, she opposed a property rights bill in Ohio and was involved in legislative reversal she opposed a property rights bill in Ohio and was involved in legislative reversal that she opposed a property rights bill in Ohio and was involved in legislative reversal that she opposed a property rights bill in Ohio and was involved in legislative reversal that that appears to have violated the spirit, if not the letter, of open government laws. appears to have violated the spirit, if not the letter, of open government laws. If we appears to have violated the spirit, if not the letter, of open government laws. If we appears to have violated the spirit, if not the letter, of open government laws. If we If we hire someone with a track record like this, how can we be confident that she will hire someone with a track record like this, how can we be confident that she will respect hire someone with a track record like this, how can we be confident that she will respect hire someone with a track record like this, how can we be confident that she will respect respect the Open Meetings Act laws and laws of the state of Michigan? Next, Carl Gafkin, the Open Meetings Act laws and laws of the state of Michigan? Next, Carl Gafkin, recently the Open Meetings Act laws and laws of the state of Michigan? Next, Carl Gafkin, recently the Open Meetings Act laws and laws of the state of Michigan? Next, Carl Gafkin, recently recently fired by Fort Smith, Arkansas, has an even more alarming history. He allegedly fired by Fort Smith, Arkansas, has an even more alarming history. He allegedly talked fired by Fort Smith, Arkansas, has an even more alarming history. He allegedly talked fired by Fort Smith, Arkansas, has an even more alarming history. He allegedly talked talked down to citizens one of the cited reasons for his termination and was the subject down to citizens one of the cited reasons for his termination and was the subject of down to citizens one of the cited reasons for his termination and was the subject of down to citizens one of the cited reasons for his termination and was the subject of of multiple lawsuits and petitions for removal. These included accusations of misrepresenting multiple lawsuits and petitions for removal. These included accusations of misrepresenting multiple lawsuits and petitions for removal. These included accusations of misrepresenting multiple lawsuits and petitions for removal. These included accusations of misrepresenting facts, signing agreements without board approval, and unlawfully donating public funds to private facts, signing agreements without board approval, and unlawfully donating public funds to private facts, signing agreements without board approval, and unlawfully donating public funds to private facts, signing agreements without board approval, and unlawfully donating public funds to private groups. A judge even ruled his administration violated FOIA laws. Do we really want to bring groups. A judge even ruled his administration violated FOIA laws. Do we really want to bring groups. A judge even ruled his administration violated FOIA laws. Do we really want to bring groups. A judge even ruled his administration violated FOIA laws. Do we really want to bring that kind of legal and ethical controversy into our city? Finally, Matt Harline was named that kind of legal and ethical controversy into our city? Finally, Matt Harline was named that kind of legal and ethical controversy into our city? Finally, Matt Harline was named that kind of legal and ethical controversy into our city? Finally, Matt Harline was named as a defendant in a federal lawsuit related to a telecom permitting while working in Villa as a defendant in a federal lawsuit related to a telecom permitting while working in Villa as a defendant in a federal lawsuit related to a telecom permitting while working in Villa as a defendant in a federal lawsuit related to a telecom permitting while working in Villa Park, Illinois. He did explain that to me last night when I spoke to him. He's the one Park, Illinois. He did explain that to me last night when I spoke to him. He's the one Park, Illinois. He did explain that to me last night when I spoke to him. He's the one Park, Illinois. He did explain that to me last night when I spoke to him. He's the one with the least amount of baggage. This is not about politics or personality. It's about with the least amount of baggage. This is not about politics or personality. It's about with the least amount of baggage. This is not about politics or personality. It's about with the least amount of baggage. This is not about politics or personality. It's about protecting our community from further controversy, mistrust, or litigation. We need a city manager protecting our community from further controversy, mistrust, or litigation. We need a city manager protecting our community from further controversy, mistrust, or litigation. We need a city manager protecting our community from further controversy, mistrust, or litigation. We need a city manager who leads with transparency, respects the law, and uplifts our residents, not one who who leads with transparency, respects the law, and uplifts our residents, not one who who leads with transparency, respects the law, and uplifts our residents, not one who who leads with transparency, respects the law, and uplifts our residents, not one who brings legal baggage, ethical concerns, or a record of public distrust. I urge the commission brings legal baggage, ethical concerns, or a record of public distrust. I urge the commission brings legal baggage, ethical concerns, or a record of public distrust. I urge the commission brings legal baggage, ethical concerns, or a record of public distrust. I urge the commission to possibly reconsider the shortlist, or I would highly suggest, out of the three candidates to possibly reconsider the shortlist, or I would highly suggest, out of the three candidates to possibly reconsider the shortlist, or I would highly suggest, out of the three candidates to possibly reconsider the shortlist, or I would highly suggest, out of the three candidates that remain, Matt Harline is the one that you would want to hire, considering the baggage that remain, Matt Harline is the one that you would want to hire, considering the baggage that remain, Matt Harline is the one that you would want to hire, considering the baggage that remain, Matt Harline is the one that you would want to hire, considering the baggage of the rest of them. I also want to say, when I met each of the candidates yesterday, of the rest of them. I also want to say, when I met each of the candidates yesterday, of the rest of them. I also want to say, when I met each of the candidates yesterday, of the rest of them. I also want to say, when I met each of the candidates yesterday, I was able to ask a few questions, and I asked all of them one question, and they I was able to ask a few questions, and I asked all of them one question, and they did I was able to ask a few questions, and I asked all of them one question, and they did respond I was able to ask a few questions, and I asked all of them one question, and they did respond did respond and give me a response that I thought was fair, that you would want to hear respond and give me a response that I thought was fair, that you would want to hear from and give me a response that I thought was fair, that you would want to hear from all and give me a response that I thought was fair, that you would want to hear from all from all of them. As a city manager, managing a city that is subject to an FBI investigation all of them. As a city manager, managing a city that is subject to an FBI investigation of them. As a city manager, managing a city that is subject to an FBI investigation in of them. As a city manager, managing a city that is subject to an FBI investigation in in the police department, how would you proceed? And they all basically said with honesty, in the police department, how would you proceed? And they all basically said with honesty, the police department, how would you proceed? And they all basically said with honesty, the police department, how would you proceed? And they all basically said with honesty, transparency, and compliance. Thank you. transparency, and compliance. Thank you. transparency, and compliance. Thank you. transparency, and compliance. Thank you.
And thank you for your comments. Ma'am, did you want to speak? And thank you for your comments. Ma'am, did you want to speak? And thank you for your comments. Ma'am, did you want to speak? And thank you for your comments. Ma'am, did you want to speak?
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Tiffany Blackman. I am a resident
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Tiffany Blackman. I am a resident
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Tiffany Blackman. I am a resident
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Tiffany Blackman. I am a resident
in Battle Creek for 42 years and a local businesswoman as well and owner. So I had
in Battle Creek for 42 years and a local businesswoman as well and owner. So I had
in Battle Creek for 42 years and a local businesswoman as well and owner. So I had
in Battle Creek for 42 years and a local businesswoman as well and owner. So I had
the opportunity to go to meet the candidates last night, and after attending the public
the opportunity to go to meet the candidates last night, and after attending the public
the opportunity to go to meet the candidates last night, and after attending the public
the opportunity to go to meet the candidates last night, and after attending the public
gathering to meet the city manager candidates, I walked away feeling uneasy regarding the
gathering to meet the city manager candidates, I walked away feeling uneasy regarding the
gathering to meet the city manager candidates, I walked away feeling uneasy regarding the
gathering to meet the city manager candidates, I walked away feeling uneasy regarding the
current options our city has procured to fill the vacant city manager position. Upon initial
current options our city has procured to fill the vacant city manager position. Upon
current options our city has procured to fill the vacant city manager position. Upon initial
current options our city has procured to fill the vacant city manager position. Upon initial
initial interaction with the candidates, although I respect the recommendations of
interaction with the candidates, although I respect the recommendations of the strategic
interaction with the candidates, although I respect the recommendations of the strategic
interaction with the candidates, although I respect the recommendations of the strategic
the strategic government resources contracted by the City of Battle Creek, I politely disagree
government resources contracted by the City of Battle Creek, I politely disagree with
government resources contracted by the City of Battle Creek, I politely disagree with
government resources contracted by the City of Battle Creek, I politely disagree with
with the urgent prompting to fill this role with any of the final candidates. I've become
the urgent prompting to fill this role with any of the final candidates. I've become aware
the urgent prompting to fill this role with any of the final candidates. I've become aware
the urgent prompting to fill this role with any of the final candidates. I've become aware
aware of an internal candidate at the City of Battle Creek, I'm here on my own accord,
of an internal candidate at the City of Battle Creek, I'm here on my own accord, I just found
of an internal candidate at the City of Battle Creek, I'm here on my own accord, I just found
of an internal candidate at the City of Battle Creek, I'm here on my own accord, I just found
I just found this out last night, that I am frankly shocked that did not pass the internal
this out last night, that I am frankly shocked that did not pass the internal test to be
this out last night, that I am frankly shocked that did not pass the internal test to be
this out last night, that I am frankly shocked that did not pass the internal test to be
test to be promoted to procure the city manager position. And it's times like these which
promoted to procure the city manager position. And it's times like these which either cultivate
promoted to procure the city manager position. And it's times like these which either cultivate
promoted to procure the city manager position. And it's times like these which either cultivate
either cultivate a fervor for rewarding hard-working city employees for their loyalty, commitment,
a fervor for rewarding hard-working city employees for their loyalty, commitment, and
a fervor for rewarding hard-working city employees for their loyalty, commitment, and
a fervor for rewarding hard-working city employees for their loyalty, commitment, and
and determination in building a city structure that supports its residents, spurs on local
determination in building a city structure that supports its residents, spurs on local
determination in building a city structure that supports its residents, spurs on local
determination in building a city structure that supports its residents, spurs on local
business, and develops our local economy, or has the opportunity to break a system
business, and develops our local economy, or has the opportunity to break a system
business, and develops our local economy, or has the opportunity to break a system that
business, and develops our local economy, or has the opportunity to break a system that
that we've created, as such pushing away good character and achievement and starting all
that we've created, as such pushing away good character and achievement and starting all
we've created, as such pushing away good character and achievement and starting all
we've created, as such pushing away good character and achievement and starting all
over again. I'm here today to advocate for the commission to decline offering the city
over again. I'm here today to advocate for the commission to decline offering the city
over again. I'm here today to advocate for the commission to decline offering the city
over again. I'm here today to advocate for the commission to decline offering the city
manager role to Carl Gafkin, Amanda Zimmerlin, or Matt Harline, and conduct a reassessment
manager role to Carl Gafkin, Amanda Zimmerlin, or Matt Harline, and conduct a reassessment
manager role to Carl Gafkin, Amanda Zimmerlin, or Matt Harline, and conduct a reassessment
manager role to Carl Gafkin, Amanda Zimmerlin, or Matt Harline, and conduct a reassessment
of Marcy Gillette, currently the community service director for the City of Battle Creek,
of Marcy Gillette, currently the community service director for the City of Battle Creek,
of Marcy Gillette, currently the community service director for the City of Battle Creek,
of Marcy Gillette, currently the community service director for the City of Battle Creek,
to be considered for or hired as the new city manager based on her deep commitment to
to be considered for or hired as the new city manager based on her deep commitment to
to be considered for or hired as the new city manager based on her deep commitment to
to be considered for or hired as the new city manager based on her deep commitment to
the City of Battle Creek, her extensive knowledge of programs in structure, department direction,
the City of Battle Creek, her extensive knowledge of programs in structure, department direction,
the City of Battle Creek, her extensive knowledge of programs in structure, department direction,
the City of Battle Creek, her extensive knowledge of programs in structure, department direction,
and cross-sectoring information exchange, grant management, financial oversight, and
and cross-sectoring information exchange, grant management, financial oversight, and
and cross-sectoring information exchange, grant management, financial oversight, and
and cross-sectoring information exchange, grant management, financial oversight, and
collaborative community connection over 20-plus years. Marcy has sat at the table of community
collaborative community connection over 20-plus years. Marcy has sat at the table of community
collaborative community connection over 20-plus years. Marcy has sat at the table of community
collaborative community connection over 20-plus years. Marcy has sat at the table of community
decision-making for more than 20 years, learning the depths of our city structure as a servant
decision-making for more than 20 years, learning the depths of our city structure as a servant
decision-making for more than 20 years, learning the depths of our city structure as a servant
decision-making for more than 20 years, learning the depths of our city structure as a servant
leader, and has been brave enough to request consideration for the city manager position,
leader, and has been brave enough to request consideration for the city manager position,
leader, and has been brave enough to request consideration for the city manager position,
leader, and has been brave enough to request consideration for the city manager position,
even though she has not had the formal title of city manager, but has decades of experience
even though she has not had the formal title of city manager, but has decades of experience
even though she has not had the formal title of city manager, but has decades of experience
even though she has not had the formal title of city manager, but has decades of experience
regarding many of its duties. I urge you commissioners, as a lifelong resident of
regarding many of its duties. I urge you commissioners, as a lifelong resident of
regarding many of its duties. I urge you commissioners, as a lifelong resident of
regarding many of its duties. I urge you commissioners, as a lifelong resident of
Battle Creek and business owner, to pause for a moment and consider the great opportunity
Battle Creek and business owner, to pause for a moment and consider the great opportunity
Battle Creek and business owner, to pause for a moment and consider the great opportunity
Battle Creek and business owner, to pause for a moment and consider the great opportunity
we have in continuing to develop a long-term local government leader with substantial public
we have in continuing to develop a long-term local government leader with substantial public
we have in continuing to develop a long-term local government leader with substantial public
we have in continuing to develop a long-term local government leader with substantial public
knowledge and extensive experience and expertise versus choosing to bypass the opportunity because
knowledge and extensive experience and expertise versus choosing to bypass the opportunity because
knowledge and extensive experience and expertise versus choosing to bypass the opportunity because
knowledge and extensive experience and expertise versus choosing to bypass the opportunity because
of the formerly, the former name of title. Just to end, I'm very concerned with Carl
of the formerly, the former name of title. Just to end, I'm very concerned with Carl
of the formerly, the former name of title. Just to end, I'm very concerned with Carl
of the formerly, the former name of title. Just to end, I'm very concerned with Carl
Gafkin's history of recently being terminated and absolutely would not choose him as a candidate.
Gafkin's history of recently being terminated and absolutely would not choose him as a candidate.
Gafkin's history of recently being terminated and absolutely would not choose him as a candidate.
Gafkin's history of recently being terminated and absolutely would not choose him as a candidate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other public comments at this time? Thank you for your comments. Are there any other public comments at this time? Thank you for your comments. Are there any other public comments at this time? Thank you for your comments. Are there any other public comments at this time? Are there any other public comments? Seanum, we'll move on to commission comment regarding Are there any other public comments? Seanum, we'll move on to commission comment regarding Are there any other public comments? Seanum, we'll move on to commission comment regarding Are there any other public comments? Seanum, we'll move on to commission comment regarding meeting and business. meeting and business. meeting and business. meeting and business. All right, we'll move on to recess. We'll confer in the commission All right, we'll move on to recess. We'll confer in the commission chambers. All right, we'll move on to recess. We'll confer in the commission chambers. All right, we'll move on to recess. We'll confer in the commission chambers. chambers.
I can provide, I think that you've got a good history, good recent history of management. And I'd like to come in and help and manage, but especially lead the fine team you have put together. So that attracted me to the city of Battle Creek. And what was the second half of the question?
What excites you most about this role and our community?
I think there's a, you've got a great history, you've got a great future, you've got, there's a lot of opportunities. It's also you are full-service city, go beyond just the basics. You also provide community support for community services, you have a transit system, you have a lot of things to offer your citizens, and you're really trying to make a better place and where I can apply my skills. I'm very excited on coming here and watch some of your council meetings. You conduct yourselves well. That is not the case in all communities in this country. So I'd be very happy to come. And if I, I'd seen part of this building from different angles, it is much more beautiful in person. So there's a beautiful city hall.
Thank you. Thank you. Number, the second question, what do you see as the most urgent challenge or opportunity for the city of Battle Creek in the next 12 to 18 months? And how would you begin addressing it?
Well, all cities face concerns over all the things that they need to get done and all, and the resources they have. So that's, that's a constant everywhere. And we don't see, doesn't look like the state and federal government, states and federal governments are going to come to our rescue again. So I think one of the things is just making sure, look at your five-year plan and look at the, one of the things that came up during the staff is some of those have been there for a while. So maybe we put the date on how long those have been there and see, you know, are these still priorities? Not that they aren't worthy, but are they still priorities? And the other thing I think is just continuing to approve, improve the image, both the physical image of some of the, you know, focusing on areas which we've reduced by half the number of vacant buildings. But I think there's some key corridors that we can make, improve the physical appearance of some places in Battle Creek. You have so many beautiful old homes, beautiful, the lake, the many features. But, and then the, just sort of the impression, I look at the National Community Survey, which you're one of the 400-plus cities that do that. And I think that's a, is a great set of data. And one of the great things is you compare yourself against other cities. For some reason, I would say that you are scoring lower than you should based on what you have. I'd like to work on that. And I, and I was talking about this to the staff, and I saw the communications director, it's not about the communications director, it's about the whole organization, talking about the successes you've had. And I think you've got a great organization. So those are two things I'd like to look at first 18 months.
Thank you very much. I'm going to call Commissioner Smith to ask the next question.
Hi, and thank you for being here.
Sorry I didn't stop over and say hi to you last night, but.
That's fine. You were busy. There was lots of people there talking with you. So I understand that. So the next question is, joining a new organization can bring change and uncertainty. How would you approach your first 90 to 180 days as city manager to build trust and stability across the workforce?
Well, first thing is, do a lot of one-on-one meetings. I'd like to meet with each of one of you in the first month and sit down and hear what you have to, what you're looking for in projects, leadership, these kinds of things. I bring a servant leadership mentality to this. You hired SGR, that's kind of their thing. So I'm thinking that maybe that's important to you as well. So what, from that, that means that working with the staff, I'm looking to make leaders at all levels. That you want a, your first out-of-the-field training officer program officer to feel like a leader, that he's confident doing his job out there. A code enforcement officer needs to be confident of their job out there. They got to be a leader. So kind of create that kind of atmosphere, start building that in the community, in the staff, or expanding that in the staff. Because I've seen a great set of department heads, very, very passionate about what they're doing. So that would be one thing. Get out in the community, not get ahead of you guys, because you are the, you know, the elected representatives. You have a special important role. And you guys have lived here for, you know, decades or many years, and you guys are the elected representatives. But to get to know the, as many of the key people in community, and you know, the less key people in community, get out there, make sure they know that I am here to be a passionate representative of Battle Creek. Talk to all the department heads. And, and then I like to actually physically get out there. In Villa Park, I spent a morning with the pothole crew. I'd like to do things like that. I was supposed to, I never got it worked out, but I was going to mow with the Parks and Rec Department, who rode along with the police and the fire. So I want to get out there and, and spend a lot of time getting to know that. One of my key jobs is to be a representative in meetings with other organizations outside of, to look outside of the organization, look at trends and, and in technology and what's going on at state level. Obviously, you are the elected officials saying policy, but one of my jobs is to look outside of the organization, make sure we can sense the future threats and opportunities. So, so, so one of the things I have to do is build those relationships. And that'd be one of the first things that's very important in those first 90 days.
Great, thank you. The next question would be, describe how you build and lead high-performing teams. How do you develop leadership within your organization?
High-performing teams, you've got, in, in local government, and, you know, I do a fair amount of reading, and you've listed, I don't know if you're a fan of Simon Sinek or Pat Lencioni or Brene Brown, but, you know, over and over, you go more and more the literature, and it shows that there's, there's reasons for this. It has to do with going back to your, you know, human biology, people need to have purpose. And I think people, and if you can't come to the local government, the thing that you do to make people, make work, make the community better each day, I mean, you bring people their water, you take care of their wastewater, you make sure their trash gets picked up, you make sure the road's there. You guys touch people every day. If you can't get excited about that purpose, then, then, you know, that's, that's my job to make sure people have that excitement. And it doesn't matter if you're working, putting the tar down on potholes. And that is, you know, that is an important part of the government. It's like the guy who was sweeping the floors at NASA and, and, you know, he said, "I'm helping build, put men on the moon." And, you know, that's an example from one of Lencioni's books. But that's the kind of desire I want to encourage, may already be out there, encourage that in, in Battle Creek. What was the other, oh, and how do it, when I was at the Village of Villa Park, we brought SGR in to set up a leadership academy. I'd love to do that again, you know, budget and, and interest willing. We actually partnered, we're a little bit smaller community, so we partnered with some other communities to make it a full class and, and covered a lot of the costs that way. But, so I think that that was something I'd look at. I'd like to do a book club, leaders or readers, so encourage, you know, and they're all busy, I don't know if any of the department heads are here, they may be growling back there. But, but I think that that's one of the things you can do to, and also can be kind of fun. And you can spur on conversations that are not just strictly task-oriented. And sometimes you get some great creative thinking that way. And, and build it, so look to make sure we're building next, the next generation of leaders. And I know we do some training, and I learned that today during talking to the staff, but expand upon that. And, and look to have leaders in Battle Creek government. So you see the next, whoever replaces me comes out of the organization. I have to go.
Commissioner Lacoste?
Good afternoon, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Describe the kind of working relationship you aim to have with the city commission. What are your expectations, communication style, and guiding principles?
Well, open and honest, it'd be important. I'd, if you guys have a problem, come talk to me if I'm doing something wrong, or if we're doing something wrong. First of all, I'd like to meet with everyone one-on-one the first month, you know, if not sooner. The, I've had organizations where elected officials, you know, did things and didn't come to me, and, and it created larger problems. I don't see that here. This seems like a very ethical organization. I like working for an ethical organization. And that's, that's key to me, is to have that open and honest conversation. You know, I, my memory isn't good enough to tell lies, so I, no, that's not the reason I don't, I want to be, you know, open and honest and transparent with you guys as, as well as we are with the public. That's all, that's what I want. I mean, there may be times where I think you guys are pursuing a terrible idea, but, you know, if you guys are sure about it, we're going to do it. And we're going to, we're going to, I'll tell you, I think, you know, that may not be a good idea. And I've been, I've seen some things that I didn't think were great ideas, and they didn't turn out too bad. And, and so you guys also know a lot more about Battle Creek than I do right now. So, but that's it, basically, open, honest, come talk to me. Email's fine, phone call's fine, but, and so I'd like, you know, if you guys want to set up a regular meeting time each month, we can do that too, as individuals. I assume that, you know, I met weekly with mayors in the past, if that's, if that's amenable to your style, that's my favorite, so that we make sure we're, and our vice mayor, to make sure we have the agenda progressing, so it's getting out in time, it's got the stuff you want on it. And if I've got something I need to bring to you, nobody, never want to surprise you with anything. I usually send out a Friday email to the board, no matter what, so that you know, even things that aren't ready to go, or some things that are, you know, just things you need to know about the organization, try and keep you guys up to speed.
Okay, thank you very much. Next question is, Battle Creek's commission has prioritized modernizing internal operations and workforce structures. What experience do you have leading operational improvement or administrative transformation efforts?
I think we did some of that in Villa Park. We, we brought on a new BSNA as an ERP system. I know you guys got a good one already. I think you guys are doing some of that already. The performance-based budgeting and trying to enhance that, that's pretty, that's pretty, you know, if I'd say cutting-edge, but it's, it's a higher-level thinking for budgeting than a lot of cities are doing. So I think continuing to do that, looking at the new technologies, I was speaking to somebody last night about AI and its use in, in municipal government. It's, it is coming, there will be uses. There can be, it can make report writing and some other things efficient, more efficient, especially things that you do regularly. You also have to be careful about if it's, especially if they're open-source type things, where capture of your data by the organization, or by the company that owns the software. But I think there's always opportunities to be more efficient. You know, we aren't adding a lot of staff, and we probably won't be adding a lot of staff, so productivity is vitally important to make sure we can find out. And I have seen here with the adding of C-click-fix, the, you know, the use of some tools that Battle Creek is not, it won't be new. And I'll say one thing, and I've mentioned this, need to look at the, you know, the structure of, look at the organizational chart, make sure that it's in an efficient form. There's a lot of reports to the, to the city manager. And I'm, I can work with that if we need to work with that, but I think that's something to look at. I don't want to diminish anybody's role though, because that's, you know, obviously a threat to somebody's access to the city manager.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Morris?
Thank you. The city has adopted a multi-year capital improvement plan. How do you ensure capital priorities align with budget realities, equity, and long-term community goals?
Well, that's, that's part of the dialogue we have in this room, and also continuing going to the community. You have a unique structure here to get some input from the community and the neighborhood planning councils. I know that some of them are more active than others, so I think that's a unique tool. Because part of the, part of the challenge is making sure that you have good information and that you know what your strategic priorities are. Because, and I stole this from my boss in Fulton, Missouri, but you can do anything you want in Battle Creek, but you can't do everything you want. You don't have that kind of resources. So it's about what is the most important thing. And that's going to be what is most important to the community. If, if the community, if they want, if the community says, you know, "We're not that worried about getting a new fire station, you can put that off, and, but we need more trails," you know, you gotta, you gotta think about that. But you might say, "Hey, we really need the fire station. I know it's going to be difficult to, to, you know, the cost. I know you just hired the consultant, so that's, that's moved, something moving on in the community." I'm not seriously talking about not building a fire station, but you've, you know, part of, it's a dialogue with the community. So that, the number one thing I'd like to do is get back to, you know, strategic plan, making sure we're reviewing it every year, because that should feed directly into your, your budget. And so you should kind of have an idea. But the five-year CIP is, is a, is a great tool, and it's, it's long. There's, there's a lot on there, and understanding some things. I think one of the things to do is find out how long things have been on there. I think that'd be a good, good thing. Parks Director mentioned that there's some things that have been there for a while.
Thank you. How do you keep commissioners, community members, and staff informed on major initiatives? What tools or strategies have you found most effective for project transparency and accountability?
Well, the weekly, weekly email and reports, I, and I get, get used to what you guys prefer. I like to see like a monthly report that has some statistical information, usually tied into what your strategic priorities are. Not make it onerous and burdensome. Usually you can find some of those numbers already being collected to keep you apprised. Some things that are useful on a regular basis, like building permits, how many building permits are being issued in residential, commercial renovations, new builds, those kind of things can, can tell you a lot about economic health. So that's, that's part of it. But then, you know, direct conversations, calling you, there's something going on in the community, without violating any open meeting rules, try and keep you guys apprised of something that might be coming up in the community, or if somebody's, if we've done something, somebody's threatening legal action against us, or something. The phone calls and weekly email, part of it. But, and then just making sure we have good relationships, so that we can, you feel free to call me, even if it's on Sunday night, because you need something before Monday morning, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mayor. Battle Creek's advancing its efforts in housing development by doing some zoning reformings. And what relevant experience do you have, and what would you bring to do the approach for these issues for here in Battle Creek?
The, I'm, I'm familiar and keep up to date with different ideas in zoning, mixed-use zoning, overlay districts, et cetera. I did actually take land use law when I was a student many years ago, although I'm not going to try and play a lawyer in the council chambers. But I think that the, the thing is to make sure that the, that you've got the code that you want, so that you can, if you want to make sure that you have nothing, you, you don't want to have any residential at the ground level in a downtown district, to make sure you have those tools in place. I don't know, I'm sorry, I don't know the specifics of the zoning update that you guys are working on, but get, get, get up to date with that, talk to your, and, and one of the things I like to do is attend the board and commission, each of the board and commission meetings. Some, some that, you know, I sit on, but to, to get to know those people, see, see how they perform their business. I've watched a couple. But, so in terms of the, I've had, in Villa Park, we had a pretty comprehensive, pretty, we had redone our, our zoning code a few years ago, and they were reviewing it again, going through and looking for where can we find ways to continue to make it easier for someone to build if they're not making a major update, what can be an administrative decision with the council's approval, with commission's approval. And then, but, you know, make sure you have the right tools in your toolbox to allow you to have the, you know, mixed-use where you want mixed-use. And then, you know, make that, make it as well-known as possible, because trying to explain zoning law to the, to anyone who's not bringing a proposal forward is, is difficult enough.
I understand zoning's exciting until it happens to you.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, I mean, it's boring, but it becomes exciting when it happens to you.
Yeah, yeah. But it's, you know, it goes back to the Euclid versus the, it's the city of Euclid versus Amber Realty. The idea is that you're protecting people's rights as long as it's part of a comprehensive plan, so you know what you can have next door, what you can't have, which is not going to happen to you next door.
Second question I have for you is, the city is home to major corporations, industrial employers, I'm not going to say this correctly, but theremopic institutions. And then how many other, how many, how would you position yourself as, in the city to build trust and a collaboration with all of our partners and a shared economic and community goals?
Well, this is going to sound a little redundant, but part of it's building human relationships. So getting out there and meeting the key people as soon as possible at Kellogg and at Post, and, you know, at the other organizations that, I went and had a sandwich at Pastrami Joe's and the organization there that's right across the hall in the building. You know, make sure that everybody knows that, that the village manager, that's, I'm sorry, I'm going to use the words village and council, where I should be using city and commission for a while. And I'm just, bear with me. I'm used to saying city for so long, and I, anyway. To make sure that they know that our office is willing to listen, make sure there's relationships. But with the Phil, you know, the, the grant writer we have on staff who's used to working with private foundations, that is a huge asset. We hired a grant writer in, when I was in Dover, and one of the things she helped us do, and I believe you already had this, is set up a 501(c)(3) that, who worked with the city to help collect tax-free donations for specific projects, parks, art installation, that sort of thing. So I think that, but, but nothing is more important than the, than the personal relationships and developing that. And yet, but not getting out in front of, I mean, I know you guys have been here, you've spent a little bit of time behind that desk, especially you, Mayor Benke. But, so I think that, you know, I don't, I help, and, you know, ask for your help to make those connections, because you guys have those, you've built those relationships in the community and, and, you know, work as a team to do this. Also, so that I don't go out there and say, "Hey, I love this. We're going to do this thing and find out that I've just agreed to promote something that is the arch-rival of whatever high school or college you went to, and all of a sudden I'm in trouble for that, so."
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome to Battle Creek. What specific professional experiences best prepare you to succeed in Battle Creek? And how do your strengths align with our commission's strategic priorities?
I think one of the things is just the, the length of time I ran for city council. I started as a city council person in Columbia, Missouri. I started attending city council meetings, particularly interested in neighborhood issues. And, you know, I was actually getting, working on a master's degree in plant pathology that never got finished, because I got, I hung out with a rough crowd and ended up running for a local election. And, so I think one of the things that I think, what I see in your strategic priorities is, is to try and, one of the things is to, to develop a stronger leadership of the, you know, to continue the leadership that you have and build that towards getting a, or maybe I'm thinking about the, what was in the advertisement, but towards making sure that we have an efficient, we have a good staff, make sure we have an efficient working team. And I've done that in, in Villa Park and other places I've been. And I think one of the things that I can bring that is, that I'm particularly good at is developing good, developing good, developing and improving morale. I think you've got pretty good morale among your staff from what I've seen. I've talked mostly to department heads and a few other people. But the few other employees that I've talked at, to in the clerk's office and, and some other people that are just wandering around, not wandering around, but going from, from job to job in the city, in the city hall. So I think what I, I can bring above all else is, is getting to focus on the tasks that we need and building that sense of purpose. You guys are doing a lot of stuff right. So I think I can keep that going, build the momentum. And also bring to bear good technological solutions where they, where they can be. We've done a lot of that in Villa Park. You guys are already out in front and doing some of that stuff. But I think, one of the things with adding C-click-fix, one of the key things you're going to need to look there is make sure that the front end and the back end are aligned. In other words, if you, there's an old adage, if you teach a bear to dance, you got to dance whenever the bear wants to. So now that the public can start taking pictures of potholes and sending them in, can you build a response rate that is, that is acceptable to the public? So make sure we've got that in place, and that the expectations are known. So you don't, you can, so that, that's one of those things that, making sure that we have, you know, when we say we can, you know, in the tour on, tour yesterday with Marcy Gillette and Jason and Francisco, they're talking about a two-week turnaround for building plans. That's fantastic. So make sure that we, you know, make that, make that known, make sure that we have the performance standards measured, which goes along with the performance-based budgeting. And make sure that, the one thing I would say is that you've got a lot of information, you've got a lot of, you're doing a lot of good things with performance-based budgeting. Maybe make it a little clearer on the website with some dashboards that explain it a little better. And I know you're doing that with a, with a, a, something that you're going to be rolling out. I know, I tried to click on it to see something more about the performance-based budgeting, but I think there's some really good tools that you guys are, are starting to work on, if I understand correctly. But I think those can be very useful tools. And we did some of that in Villa Park. And I've, I've had ideas about other things we could do there, which we didn't get implemented.
Thank you. And then, what closing comments would you like to leave us with regarding your candidacy and your vision for Battle Creek's future?
Well, first I want to say thank you. Thank you, Mayor Benke, commissioners, citizens of Battle Creek who came out last night, and there was a, a number of them. I thought it was, I mean, 52,000, you could have a lot more, but I thought you got a really good turnout. And that speaks well to you guys getting the word out there and about the people who care about this community. I really want to say thank you to the staff that, you know, to the point of, in the waiting room, there's breath mints and water, and they're really thinking about the candidate. It's a good job. Hiring Strategic Government Resources, Clay Pearson, thank you, and the job they do. I've worked with the former director there, executive director Ron Holyfield, for a number of years. They've got a great organization. I think that I want to bring to Battle Creek a, I'm dedicated to that concept of servant leadership, because local government touches people in a way that no other government does. And it's, it is a, you know, elected officials, you don't have session, you are in session year-round, and you go to the grocery store, and people come and talk to you, and they know who you are, which, you know, I bet there's a lot of people who wouldn't recognize their state senator if they stood next to them. But, so I want to, because we touch people at such a, on a daily basis, I think that we have a unique role in the, 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 preserving and improving democracy in the United States of America. And that's something that's really important to me. And I think you've got a great organization here, and you are, as a full-service city, you can, you know, we can continue with other cities and, you know, building a better country, better world. So, I mean, that's very, that's, that's very out there and a kind of idealistic, but I think that that's a great place that, you know, I like to think big and, and work just in, what's just in front of me. I like to energize some of the, the, the youth, the Neighborhood Planning Council, the Youth Advisory Board. My daughter served on a Youth Advisory Board in Columbia, Missouri. It was a very important part in her, in her life to keep building the next generation to, to fill the commissions or the committees and the boards that you guys have. And then someday, not that you guys don't want to be here for a long time, but to make sure that there are, there are future leaders in Battle Creek, and bring that concept and build that morale and the effectiveness of the staff to help serve the citizens. So, you know, I, I think you guys are on a, in a great trajectory, and I'd like to help send it upward at a quicker pace maybe. And you've done good work to grow your reserves into, from 2020 to present, improvements in a number of different areas. You've, and one of the things that really struck me in your annual comprehensive financial report was the law, the water loss. You cut from like 23% to 11%, and that's a big deal. That's important, or 12%, that's from 2016 to 2024. You got a lot of, you had 10, 1,036 acres of parkland, beautiful natural lake. You got a lot of great things going here, and I just want to be part of this team. And I'm very thankful to have made it to the top three, and hope, hope very much that I'm your number one choice.
We have a couple more questions that Commissioner Lacoste is going to ask. They're her own words, and Commissioner Lance, who unfortunately was not able to be here, asked her to also ask. So we've got two more questions for you, and then we're going to turn it over to you, and have you ask us if there are any questions. Commissioner Lacoste?
Please describe the strategies you would implement to ensure Battle Creek remains adaptable and successful in an ever-changing business environment, and outline your approach to evaluating, planning, and communicating future to evaluating, planning, and communicating future financing for major city projects.
Now, if you want to take a break from that, that's a big question.
Well, I mean, I, I will say, um, that, you know, in, in adaptable, I assume you mean in terms of being ready to change direction, I mean, right now you've built an aeronautics, um, support industry, which you, you know, have, have, didn't have forty years ago, now you do more in the automotive, uh, realm. It's not just cereal in, in, uh, Battle Creek, so, you know, you guys are doing a lot of that now with the Economic Development Organization, work those partnerships and, and be, uh, keep looking out onto the horizon. There are a lot of jobs more and more out there where you can, the CEO can live anywhere, there, you know, the idea of the, the, uh, office space, uh, is, 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 uh, the standard office space is kind of dwindling, so we've got to be ready for that. We also have to understand, and I'm sure you do, that our, you know, our tax base is best comes, you know, are, are one of the strongest, uh, places, uh, is when somebody lives and works in Battle Creek. So trying to keep that, trying to keep, uh, the center of a business, you know, maybe the CEO lives here, maybe they, they say the, the business is here, so, and I, and I'm not exactly sure how the state of Michigan counts that, but we have to be aware of, you know, we do, we get the most bang for the buck when we get somebody to live and work here. So, you know, really, so that's one of the things, uh, being a retail hub is important too. Right on I-94, um, we've, and we do, and you guys are doing a good job, uh, at the 194-94 intersection there. So, the, you, you have to have a good team to keep looking out there and seeing how the, uh, one of the things that, um, SGR has done is they've partnered with, or bought basically the Alliance for Innovation. So I think participating in those kind of groups and making sure that you are attending the conferences out in Las Vegas to make sure that if somebody wants to bring businesses or they're looking to cite their businesses, so we can keep the presence in the economic development circles. So it's, it is, you, you have to keep your eye on the horizon, and you really have to, uh, not get, um, not get, uh, trapped in thinking, you know, we do, we have to do big box stores, we have to do that sort of thing. And a question came up, one of the things you guys do have a strong support for the arts. Arts and history are a great, uh, you know, a great attractor of people, make it a nicer place to live, and maybe the CEO decides to build his high-tech company right here in Battle Creek and, because there's something here that he just particularly, or she particularly loves, so.
Okay, thank you. Um, the last one is, the city commission has tasked you with identifying efficiencies in both operational and personnel processes across city departments. Please describe the steps you would take to assess and recommend improvements, your criteria for evaluating efficiency, and how you would prioritize and time these efforts.
Uh, I think that's a really good question because, you know, the organizational chart is pretty broad. Take a look at that and find out where we are. If there's any place where we're doing the same thing in two different departments, um, kind of look at that and see where, and then, and you know, and encourage cross-functional teams so that we don't have to have, where we don't have two offices when you really just need people already in the existing office to work, uh, more closely together. I think one of the, the important, one of the difficulties of doing that in city government is that we do so many things with not great depth. I mean, you don't have, if you were, Metro has a ton of employees and they're all dedicated, which is the transit system in Chicago land area, the Chicago area, that they're, they're getting everyone to where they're going primarily by train, so they have a lot of depth and they're really concentrated on moving people by train. We have a bus service, we have an airport, we have Public Works, we have, so we have to do a lot of things. So that's a big, so that's a great question, it's a big challenge. One of the things is to, to talk to the department heads, look for those, those efficiencies. Um, and then, you know, it's just, uh, where are there some natural changes? And, you know, I don't want to look too much on who works well together now because that is, you know, that can change later, but, uh, that is going to be part of it, is who can work well together, because don't try and force something when we've got some, uh, you know, everybody's, everybody's different, they may be great in their own, in their own right, but not going to excel under a certain leader or certain boss. So I think there's some opportunities for that. The other thing is where, where if you put somebody in the same department together where they're bumping into each other on a regular idea, are you going to generate better ideas? It's the, it's the, uh, creating a common area where you accidentally bump into each other and, and, and start talking about new ideas, so. So I mean, I think, I think the first thing before I make any definite statements there is just to really understand who's doing what, where, uh, something is taking place with like the, uh, the facilities and the garage and see where those are now and where, where they have the best, uh, connections, where they have the, where they have the best, and who is, like, maybe the, what the, the, the airport and the, the garage together because they both spend a lot of their time searching for fuel, different kinds of fuel, but they're looking to the same markers. I don't think that's the case, but, you know, so there may be some, some, um, common tasks that they're performing, so you might be surprised at what works well together.
Okay, thank you.
I liked your comments about the trains. I have a couple of, uh, former commissioner here and a former city employee that will take, go on vacation, leave out of Battle Creek on the Amtrak and maneuver through Chicago, either Dole Herre or Midway, and before you know it, they're on the West Coast. And I, I marvel at the memorization of the Chicago, uh, train system, and I hope I someday can do that. We also ran into a Kellogg employee from Australia that was able to fly from Australia to, to Chicago and then take the train to Battle Creek, and he really appreciated that.
Yeah, that's, those are great, those are great connections, making sure people know about those too, because there's, it's neat having an Amtrak station right town. I used to take, I went to college in St. Louis, grew up in Kansas City, and would take Amtrak home, I was, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's big. Do you have any questions for us?
Oh, thousands, but, um, I guess my number one question, um, would be, um, how, what, how do you like to interact with the village man, city manager? Sorry, there we go again. Um, what is, what is your style of, uh, communication that you guys prefer? And I don't know if that's an individual, each individual question.
Well, each one of us will answer that, and we'll start with the vice mayor, and we'll go right down the.
Um, so my preferred, um, and what has, what has seemed to work well for me is the weekly updates from the city manager, um, along with any kind of breaking news, you need to know this now, this can't wait until the end of the week, and then, um, the, the monthly opportunity to have a one-on-one with, with them to find out kind of big picture, kind of what projects are we working on. I can download, um, you know, if, if I've gotten resident, um, concerns, complaints, questions, I can get answers there or get follow-ups to those. That's what works for me.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
I'll lead off by saying though, my superpower is to confuse, so, please, please, please allow that to be in our conversations that, uh, but.
Which means you've got a lot of ideas going on.
Well, I, yeah, exactly, I get a lot of ideas coming in all times, and, um, I work in the communications industry, telecommunications, and so I have different levels that I, that I trust, that I enjoy to, uh, be, to find out what the true meaning is. Um, to me mostly, I, my favorite's personal because it knocks out a lot of the, uh, what-ifs and, uh, text questions and things like that that gets missed, and, um, but the next level is just to have a weekly, like, update, but a monthly possible one-on-one to, to make sure we're all on the same direction, um, that I'm not confusing you or you're confusing me. Um, but I also like an open communication, and you talked earlier that we could have it anytime, uh, because sometimes there is citizen, uh, needs that are needed like right away, and I just want to be comfortable enough that I can say, hey, this is what's going on, if we can just reach out to them and let them be acknowledged that they're being taken care of, and then, uh, take care of the problem if it's, it needs to be immediate or just understand that, there could be environmental problems at the time to, that we need to mitigate before we can take care of the, the true, uh, cause. Um, because like always, there is, um, when you have a problem, there's not just the main, uh, problem that we're looking at, there's also root causes that need to be taken care of to prevent further, uh, things happening, so that's the kind of level of communication I like.
Yeah, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
And I, I'll do what I can to not confuse, not add confusion.
No, you have the right to tell me I'm confusing you, by the way.
All right.
Make sure that I'm doing my job.
Fair enough.
Commissioner Morris?
Thank you. Um, I was personally glad to hear you say that you like to do the weekly updates because that is very helpful for us, um, and another thing that jumped out when you said that was that you said, uh, reports, kind of high-level reports, um, even if it's not necessarily information that I need at the moment, just knowing that that information is there for me to be able to come back to is always helpful. Um, personally, I don't, um, like the monthly one-on-one meetings as much as everybody else, but that's only because, like them, um, when there is a concern, I am like immediately reaching out to try and get that answered, so I feel that throughout the month, there's so, so many times that I reach out when something happens immediately, that sometimes during those one-on-ones, we've already discussed everything. Um, so I do see the value in it, but I am more of a person who, um, appreciates you being available for when things do arise.
It can be coffee too, or, yeah.
I kind of echo Vice Mayor Sophia's feelings on it. The weekly updates are excellent, I really appreciate those, along with emails for urgent situations, um, that we need to be abreast of, um, the monthly or bi-monthly meetings, and then I, I also like to be able to email if there are those intermittent issues that can't wait until those monthly or bi-monthly meetings.
Um, I like the weekly emails that we have going on, but also, um, like Commissioner Morris was saying, like, I will just bother somebody if I need them, I guess, so, that's kind of, I think I missed my last, like, bi-monthly meeting now that I think about it, because I had already sent so many emails asking questions, and I try not to do that too much, but, uh, if it happens.
Well, if you want to make up one, I can, you know, we can.
Yeah, so, same thing, just the weekly emails are great.
Okay. And you prefer Katsarski Smith, or do you just like Smith, or do you?
I mean, if you can pronounce Katsarski Smith, that's fine, but Smith is fine too.
Some of us can't.
Yeah, kind of whatever, you know, it's.
There's, Chicago's got a lot of interesting last names, so I'm getting, I'm getting, I'm getting there.
Well, I've been around for a little while, and I remember arguments taking place over a fax machine, and those always were quite interesting because they would go out the entire commission. Matter of fact, they used to buy you a fax machine, and you'd use the city fax machine in your office, and those days are long gone, but I think today, um, I have an established meeting with the interim city manager at a certain hour, um, once a week. Um, if there is a phone call that comes in, it's, it's an emergency phone call, and he's wanting to confer with you, or Rebecca would want to confer. Rebecca didn't call very often, but when she did, it was very important, so. I'll never forget when, uh, the Kellogg Company split up into different companies, it was six o'clock in the morning when I was taking a shower and she was trying to get ahold of me, and I just, I didn't pick up, but, um.
That was good, that was good.
Yes, it was, it was interesting, but I think communication's important, it's not what it used to be, um, there's a lot of texting that takes place today, um, right here in the meeting. I had a customer text me and wondered to know why I wasn't picking up or responding to the email, so, but you, you know, you've got to, you've got to take care of the customer, and that's what it's all about, so. I think it's a good question, I appreciate it. We want to thank you for your time, um.
I did, I guess I do have one other thing.
Okay.
I'm, I'm a Kansas City Royals fan, that's usually not offensive to anybody, so I guess I said that last night too, so that, that should be, I have no, uh, no affiliation in, uh, the Spartans or the Wolverines, so.
How about the Lions?
The Lions? Uh, they're a great team.
This is important, as well, answer wisely.
I did grow, grow up in Kansas City, uh, I, I'm more of a baseball fan than a football fan, but, uh, they got a team in Kansas City, it's been doing pretty well recently, so.
You go to any of the Cubs games?
I did, I love, I love going to, there's also four minor league teams in the Chicago area, I like going to minor league baseball, so. You guys have a, like a college-level, um, minor league team that plays here or something? I think their stadium isn't quite over, so.
Yeah, they just ended last week.
Oh, is that, oh, no, I have not been to, to Comerica Park, but I had been to Old Tiger Stadium, so.
Hopefully you'll get an opportunity.
Yeah, I'd like that.
Any other points or, um, comments? And we want to say thank you very much, we appreciate it, and, uh, you'll hear from us.
You can stop right now if you want. Save yourself all that. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
No problem.
Mayor, can we take a five-minute break?
Mayor, can we take a five-minute break?
So they all know. And if it's a general council or a general city issue, I'll email the entire council. And then I usually have a group text and send a text saying, I need you to check your emails.
Okay. Battle Creek's Commission has prioritized modernizing internal operations and workforce structures. What experience do you have leading operational improvement or administrative transformation efforts?
Sure. That's a good question. So particularly with the city of Clayton where I am now, you know, our, when I came in, our AV system was very dated. We weren't live streaming meetings. We were recording them and posting them. We started live streaming through YouTube, much like you do here. And that was also helped by ARPA funds with the grant money to be able to upgrade our, our AV system in the council chambers. You know, we didn't have a GIS program, which we've started, which is a boon and very helpful with development and with our public service department. They're, they're grateful for that. You know, we've also updated our website to make it more accessible. Before, the website was very bogged down. And it was very, it wasn't hard to navigate, but it was harder to navigate. And now that we've made some amendments, it's easier to navigate. And then we also have the ability to change font size and make it more ADA compliant.
Thank you.
Commissioner Morris?
Thank you. The city has adopted a multi-year capital improvement plan. How do you ensure capital priorities align with budget realities, equity, and long-term community goals?
Sure. So, you know, every year, or five years, but when you're looking at the capital improvement plan, and you're making those long-range plans, looking at the strategic plan that the city has laid out and where the city wants to be in five or 10 years is essential. So I would think that the things that go into that capital improvement plan, if we're talking about road construction or new building construction, anything like that, would be housed in that plan. And then you look out, well, where does the city want these items to be completed? Or where do you want to start these items? And that's where you put them in the budget. Now, of course, there are sometimes budgetary constraints, and, you know, the best played, best laid plans fall to the side when you don't have the money to do the bigger projects that you wish to do. And you fall back on providing just the essential, essential services that the city is, provides.
Thank you. How do you keep commissioners, community members, and staff informed on major initiatives? What tools or strategies have you found most effective for project transparency and accountability?
For project transparency, if we're talking about the general community, I found that community meetings, offering those to the public are very helpful. They're not always well-attended, but, you know, you can always, like, the information is there and available. I have met one-on-one when people have questions. Just for the record, I also wear the development director's hat where I am. You know, meet one-on-one with people who want to come in and discuss issues, or want to discuss what a plan is, or what the city zoning, what it means in our zoning code, if this is zone, you know, RSD, or CMX, or whatever the zoning designation may be. We typically do a concerted effort on social media to push information out to the public, not only to advertise meetings if we're having public meetings about issues, but also to, you know, just to put out general information. An example I can give you, we did an active transportation plan this last year, in 2024, and we held three, three or four, public meetings in different locations around the city. So people would have easier access to come to those meetings if they wanted to come to those meetings. And in each of those meetings beforehand, you know, we put out the information, we put it in the city's lobby, we put it at the library, we sent it out to the schools. We tried to reach as many people as humanly possible in the community so everyone would have the opportunity, if they so choose, to do input. We also put out, you know, community surveys online that people were able to access to give their input if they didn't want to come in. And then we also had paper copies in case people either didn't want to use, you know, the internet, or couldn't use the internet, or didn't have access. So, you know, I think just trying to meet people where they are is probably the best way to say that. It's just meet people where they are. Try to go to where people are.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mayor. Quick, quick question. How was your evening last night here?
It was nice. It was nice. It was nice to meet so many of the people in the community. My daughter came here with me, and she and I went to the Aloy Restaurant in, in the hotel, and it was very nice.
Thank you. Battle Creek's advancing its efforts in the housing development and zoning reform. What relevant experience do you bring? And how would you use the approach for these issues here, Battle Creek?
So as I mentioned before, aligning the zoning code to what the vision the city has makes things a lot easier. So when I came into the city of Clayton, I'm going to preface this with, the city of Clayton is an incredibly young city. We were formed in 1998. We were the merger of a village and a township. And, you know, we're still kind of going through an identity crisis of what we want to be. And, but we had completed a land use plan, right? So we had a land use plan of what we wanted to do with the land that we had, the city had available, the open space that was there. And, or even the non-open space, what we wanted to do with the space. And, you know, one of the first things I did once we had that was to then look at our zoning code and say, okay, well, if this is zoned agriculture, but we're saying we want it to be housing, we need to make some changes. We need, so when somebody comes in, it's a little easier for them to say, hey, I want to put housing here, and they don't have to go through the process of getting the zone changed. Now, they just have to go through the regulatory approval process, but the zone change is already there. We did the same thing with a large tract of land that we had for commercial. It was zoned agriculture. It's on the southern side of the city, which is the more populated side of the city. And, you know, it was kind of this big farm field right along State Route 49 in Ohio. And it was zoned agriculture. So what we did preemptively was go in, the, the property owners were in agreement, and said, hey, yep, this is what we want to do. We want to zone this commercial so we can develop this. And that's actually, that's paying off. Before I came here on Tuesday night, I was actually on the phone with the Dayton Development Coalition, trying to work out a deal so we could put a building there. So I think that's the first step, is aligning that zoning code.
Thank you for your answer on that. You see a lot of that development going on right now with, by the highways and stuff, those warehouses. I think those are great ideas. Here's the next question. The city is home to major corporations, industrial employers, and therapeutic institutions. How would you position the city to build trust and a collaboration with these other partners to advance a shared economic growth and community goals?
That's a good question. So I think that visits, just retention visits, are always a good idea. Just going out, meeting with the people that you already have here to see what they need from the city. We do that every three or four years in the city of Clayton. We will pull a group together, we will have a walking list, and we will go out, and we will drive and hit all of these businesses that we have in town, and just talk to the business owners, or the managers, or whoever's there, to see if there is anything that, a service that they need from us that we're not providing. And if we can't provide the service, we let them know that. But if there are other things that we could potentially provide, if there's any help that they need, if they're having issues, you know, one of the things I can tell you, you know, with those visits, we had a, it's a motorcycle dealership. And they were having some issues with, with theft. And, you know, we informed, in that meeting, then informed, informed the police department that, hey, we're having some issues in this part. They're having issues. And they increased patrols to that area, basically, is what happened. Why they weren't being called when it was happening, I don't know. But they, they increased patrols to that area, and things got better. So I think those retention visits are incredibly important to see where your corporation, where your people are.
Vice Mayor is going to ask one question, and then we're going to go back to Commissioner Lacoste, who has a couple additional questions, and then we'll, once again, go back to the Vice Mayor. So, sorry about any confusing.
It's okay.
Welcome to Battle Creek.
Thank you.
What specific professional experiences best prepare you to succeed in Battle Creek? And how do your strengths align with our commission's strategic priorities?
So I have had the opportunity to serve in, in several communities. I started my career, you all seem arisen, I started my career in the city of Xenia, moved to the city of Madera, and then the city of Springdale, and now I'm in the city of Clayton. I think each of those particular experiences have given me a glimpse into different management styles, and into the different desires of communities. Because those communities that I have served have been very different. The city of Madera is a very affluent, small suburb outside of Cincinnati. The city of Springdale is a very working-class, you know, middle-of-the-road city. And then the city of Clayton, I would classify as a very middle-class, middle-of-the-road city as well. And, you know, I think with those experiences, you know, where I'm not just serving one type of community, I think it gives me the opportunity to come to Battle Creek with a wealth of experience and an open mind, to be able to do what this commission needs me to do.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lacoste?
Please describe the strategies you would implement to ensure Battle Creek remains adaptable and successful in an ever-changing business environment, and outline your approach to evaluating, planning, and communicating future financing for major city projects.
Okay. So for major city projects, if we're talking about building infrastructure, you know, I don't think bonding is a bad thing. If you can use somebody else's money to do the project, right, you should. But what I can tell you is with that capital planning piece, what I've always done, if I know, if we know that there is a large project, or if we have grant funding already lined up, and it's for several years down the road, we start setting money, or I would always set money aside in the capital improvement plan. I would set money aside in the capital budget, not just the plan. Every year during the budget cycle, so when we get to the point where we're ready to do that project, we have the money to either have the matching grant funds, or to complete the project ourself. I can give you an example of that right now. In my little city of Clayton, we have a roundabout going in at a corner that is very active. There's a lot of commercial development on the south side of that corner. And sometimes traffic gets very backed up. Right now, it's just a four-way stop. And we were able to get grant money from the state of Ohio for a roundabout at that location. And in 2020, we, as soon as we found out we had the grant, and the council approved the acceptance of the grant, we started putting money away. So when we hit 2026, and this project is coming to fruition, we have that money. The engineering will be paid for, well, the engineering's already paid for. But all of that will be covered, and we're not going to have to take any indebtedness for that project.
Okay, thank you. The city commission has tasked you with identifying efficiencies in both operational and personnel processes across city departments. Please describe the steps you would take to assess and recommend improvements, your criteria for evaluating efficiency, and how you would prioritize and time these efforts.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Yeah, absolutely. It's a lot. Okay. The city commission has tasked you with identifying efficiencies in both operational and personnel processes across city departments. Please describe the steps you would take and assess, and take to assess and recommend improvements, your criteria for evaluating efficiency, and how you would prioritize those.
Okay. So, I mean, I think the first step in that process would be to talk to the departments, to go in and see what their day-to-day operations are like, what their duties are, and what they're looking, potentially, what, what they would like to do, what their goals are. I think that if you're looking at enterprise-wide, that's a really big task, and it's probably helpful to have an outside agency come in and help with that process. Not only does that, you know, alleviate something else that HR would have to do on top of their regular tasks, but it would also take out any bias that may be present from me, or from HR, or from department heads, to really drill down and assess what's going on in departments. As far as prioritization, you know, I think that the things that would be prioritized in any department would be those that are essential to the functions of the city. And then after that, it would be those that promote and further the desires of this commission.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Sorry. What closing comments would you like to leave us with regarding your candidacy and your vision for Battle Creek's future?
Oh, thank you. Well, one, I'm very happy to be here. I'm happy for this opportunity. I've always prided myself on trying to leave the communities that I'm in better, or at least not worse than when I found them, to try to set things up. So when I am gone, or whoever follows behind me, has the ability to further whatever the city's strategic plan is after, after I leave. I think that, you know, I've been able to do that in every community that I've been in. And I think that if you were to talk to, if you were to talk to any of my former council members, that they would tell you that, that I really do make an effort to team-build with staff, to be able to have, you know, everybody kind of marching in the same direction, and to not have wayward departments, that everybody is pulled together.
Do you have any questions for us as a city commission about this opportunity?
I absolutely do, if you don't mind. Okay. So first, what opportunities exist to improve collaboration between the elected officials here and staff?
Well, I'll take a stab at that first. There's always an opportunity to increase communication. I feel it's important, especially once we set some goals for the city commission. In the years past, we've had opportunities to bring senior staff together on semi-retreats that we use to set our goals. We haven't done that probably in the last five years, though. That's how we get to know each other better. Attending various functions throughout the city, we just had our streets director retire, Todd Gerber. And there were a lot of people, a lot of the commissioners were at that event, too. And I think that provides an opportunity, really, to better understand the functions between city commission and the senior staff and the city management. So that's my answer. I'm going to turn it over to anyone else.
I think, excuse me, I think that it would have been probably Rebecca that put the program into place. But when new commissioners have come on board, they've been, and not that we couldn't just anytime in general, but making sure particularly that the new commissioners have a chance to get out, tour the new, tour the departments, and, and talk to those directors, and get a real sense for what happens within the departments.
Commissioner Morris?
Thank you. So unfortunately, I didn't get to experience that because I was first elected during COVID. So I had a little bit of a different experience, and got the opportunity to meet with all the department heads via Zoom, and get a better understanding of what they do. But something that is beneficial to us that we do here is we have senior staff come in and give reports at the meetings. And so we kind of have an idea of what's going on in their departments. And they, like, introduced their teams to us at that time. And that happens, and it gives us an opportunity to connect better. But I would also like to see us do some sort of retreat so that we can build those better one-on-one relationships, and just get a better understanding of what each person's role is, and how we can help each other.
Commissioner Lacoste?
I think a retreat sounds like a great idea as well. I was one of those that were fortunate enough to meet with the department heads coming in, and I thought it was an amazing opportunity. I went to every single one of them, you know, down to the water treatment plant, and toured, and got an idea on what their issues were, and how I can help them, and, you know, what, what they thought they brought to the table, and really get to spend some time with them. So that was very advantageous to do that.
I agree. I think the meeting with the department heads is definitely helpful. Personally, for me, I've enjoyed, like, when someone will reach out and give me, like, a volunteer opportunity, hey, you want to come hang out with us and do this? And I've tried to take all those opportunities that I can. And I've really enjoyed that as a way to not only meet some of the department heads and things, but just other people in the community.
Any other questions?
I do, if you really don't mind. I have.
No, no, we have plenty of time.
What qualities do you value most in a city manager?
Commissioner Lacoste?
I think transparency is huge, you know, both with the commission and with the community. I think it's a really important aspect of that. And communication are the two biggest things by far. Just being there, you know, we understand, at least me personally, that you need to have an outside life as well. But, you know, if there is urgent issues, being able to get in touch with somebody. I really value being able to, you know, currently email Ted if I have an issue that's a little bit pressing, things like that. Those are the two biggest for me.
Commissioner Morris?
I also value strong communication in a city manager, along with the knowledge that comes with the experience of the job. We are a strong city manager city, so we do rely really heavily on the knowledge of the city manager, the experience and the expertise. So I just really value having somebody that knows what they're doing.
Commissioner Patrick O'Donnell, then we'll go to the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Leadership, trustworthiness, openness to the community are really the pillars of a good city manager. Also, not just being available to us as a city commissioner who will employ you, but also to the citizens of the city. And it's always kind of nice when I chat with some of the city citizens about follow-up of stuff that's happened, little things. It could be just a fencing ordinance, or it could be something major like a building that was on fire. But they always enjoy that, make sure that they have good, well-communications. And like, I'm glad I got to talk to staff, a little more personal greeting to people. So that's what we look for.
So I will echo the communication aspect. I never want to be caught by surprise. But I think that the other thing, and, and I think that you touched on that, is the ability to disagree without being disagreeable. I am entitled to not support a recommendation by city staff. And I, as a commissioner, I expect that while we may disagree, that in public, we are not going to go after each other.
I'd like to state that our previous city manager had a very good grasp of government. But if there was ever one area that we were negligent on, was customer service when it came to compliance and inspections. I really don't feel that we should be out there looking for trouble with our citizens. I think we should work to make it their service to invest in our community, to build in our community. But we need to get away from where we cause a relationship that's adversarial. And that's what I'm really going to be looking at this year.
So what role do you see the city manager playing in policy development versus policy implementation?
I think it's important that we have good policy, especially when it comes to building $25 million of improvements to our fire station. And we spent a lot of time galvanizing a lot of people, a lot of organizations, in order to pull that off. I think it's remarkable, I've said it's historic, that we're doing as much as we can with our fire department, because they deserve it. And the citizens deserve it, too. So it took two years, probably more than that, to develop the policy that we needed to build the improvements to the fire department. Commissioner Morris?
I think that, for me, I would like to see a policy driven by what already exists, what has been identified as needs in our community through things like the capital improvement plan, by interacting with the neighborhood planning councils to see what's going on. And then using your knowledge that you would bring to the community from your past experiences, from your education, to drive those decisions, and utilizing the team members that exist in their positions with their expertise. And just kind of collaborating so that you utilize what's here. There's a wealth of knowledge amongst the staff that already exists. So utilizing that will be very beneficial.
Commissioner Patrick O'Donnell?
I would consider the city manager to be almost twofold, two different models or roles, I guess I would say. One is, is you're representing the city commission, which, and then you're also developing and working with the department, kind of like the head of the department, where you get to hear both sides. And there's, sometimes there's things that happen that we need to focus some policies on, and it, and it would be great to be developed. And I'll just give a fun example that we recently had with a citizen who, we, we have chicken ordinance, and she really can't have, to have chickens. She, she, because of protein, she needed ducks. And I was unaware of that, but if the city staff was like, hey, people are asking about ducks and bees, and you, I wouldn't mind if you developed some type of policy to fit that into the community, to make it, because we want people to just enjoy being here in Battle Creek and not have to go through a lot of hoops. But we may not hear about these things, and if you could communicate that in a memo, like, we're getting people talking about community gardens, or things like that, open spaces, how can we get those re-zoned to fit the need of the community? That's, that's how I would look at the policy.
So as I believe it was Commissioner Morris pointed out, we have a strong city manager. And so, you know, we all, we all have jobs outside of this. And so we rely on the city manager to make sure that we are aware of emerging issues, and to suggest policy. It's obviously the purview of the commission to adopt. But I think that it's incumbent upon the city manager to at least have those conversations, or make those suggestions.
Any other comments or answers? Amanda, is there anything else?
One more, and then I'll leave you alone.
Perfect.
Can you share how the commission typically handles disagreements or differences in the vision for the city?
You said differences within?
Yes. So if there is a difference, or a disagreement, or a difference in the vision that each of you have for the city, how that's handled?
Well, we like to communicate and talk things out. Right now, we're looking at some development on the south side of Battle Creek with the LDDA. And there's a one commissioner that is not agreeing with everything that is being put together. He's called upon my office to sit down and talk with Ted. And that's one way of doing it, and try to reach some compromises, or reach consensus on some of the initiatives that Ted's representing out there. There are, there's going to be disagreements. There's going to be different positions. Our flag policy has been controversial, and we've done our best to represent the citizens, a diverse community in Battle Creek. So that's one of the things we do. There's always an opportunity, appointed committee, to look at the flag policy, which we did. We're still having disagreements. I'll allow the rest of the commission to answer. Commissioner Lacoste?
I think that this commission does a great job of communicating with each other on how they feel, you know, our different viewpoints. And everyone's been very receptive to hearing each other out, and, you know, trying to communicate those feelings to make the other person maybe look at things from a different perspective. And sometimes the views change, sometimes they don't. But we've all been very respectful with one another's views.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I think I will just echo with that. You know, we are pretty good about the communication, I think, and talking, and listening to everyone else's needs and opinions, and being respectful, you know, whether we feel the same or not. And I think, yeah, I think we do a great job for the most part. I don't, I think the communication here is pretty strong amongst everybody, so, including Ted and all of our other staff over there.
Thank you. Yeah, no, this commission's great because we're, we're, we're not everywhere at every time, but we are everywhere at every time. And there's things that we miss, or we hear about, and we get, make sure that it's factual and straight before we make decisions. And also make sure that we're comfortable. But we're not always in agreement at any time. And nobody holds it or keeps score either. There's no scorekeeping. Like, you didn't vote for me last week, I'm not going to help go against you. It's been very great communications, and, and very helpful to learn from one another's different perspectives. Like was said, it helps make sure that we bring the proper decisions to reflect everyone in the community.
That's good to hear.
Vice Mayor?
It goes back to being able to disagree without being disagreeable. I think that we're all confident and comfortable enough in who we are, and the perspective that we are representing here on the commission, to be in the minority, and, you know, have it be an eight to one, seven to two. And we've had some five to four votes. And we all come away from that, perhaps learning something a little bit about the, the issue. And I, I think that we're able to put those differences aside and do what's best for the community.
Amanda, I want to say thank you very much. We're going to take a break. If you want to stick around and say a few closing words with us individually, we can do that.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Okay. Carl.
Mayor.
I want to officially welcome you to Battle Creek.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have an hour and 15 minutes to do your interview. We'll have 15 questions. I'm going to start off with the opening question.
Yes, sir.
What drew you to apply for the city manager position in Battle Creek? What excites you most about this role and community?
Battle Creek is a very, of course, historic city, and it has many, many positive attributes that are going well for it. I mean, part of it is city leadership, of course, including the commission, and the nature of its people. In my research, I found them to be kind, caring, diverse, and that is what attracts me. I mean, coming from the city of New York, that's, that level of diversity is something I appreciate, that open and welcoming sense. Also, the history with, of course, Kellogg and Post and Ralston. It really led me, in my research, to see an exciting city and one that I would like to give my experience and attributes to help manage. I, my goal was always in my career to become a city manager, and I've been fortunate enough In speaking to several people in and around town, especially in the hotel, you know, I asked them, I said, are you a native? Oh, yes, we are. And I said, do you like living here? Yes. That was the answer. And all of my research has come up to see that vast majority, I mean, over two-thirds of the people are happy living in Battle Creek. But I said, so what do you see as any issue that's facing the city? And this, and it's typical, and we've had many of these conversations amongst the candidates and during the tour. It's activities. They need to be more activities and more shopping, really economic activity. So, addressing the activity portion, there is much going on. And it's, and this is endemic in any city across the country. It's getting that information out there. You could run a plane with a flag at the end saying Saturday, this weekend. And unfortunately, not all of our residents would be able to see that. But it's getting the message out, which also then helps promote transparency. That's one of the key successes I had while I was in Fort Smith.
Good. Commissioner Smith, will you take the next couple of questions?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you.
The next question will be, joining a new organization can bring change and uncertainty. How would you approach your first 90 to 180 days as city manager to build trust and stability across the workforce?
There are two of my prior positions that directly relate to that question. First was the city of Reading when I was hired as finance director. And when, and I, by my research, I had noticed that they, in the 2009 budget, had used $5 million of one-time funds to balance the budget. And that in 2010, we were facing a budget deficit of $15 million. 75 million in expenses versus 60 in revenues. And there were people that were concerned. Now, I was able to get the job because of my experience, again, in the city of New York, where we were always taught that you will make do, you will do more with less, so you would cut the budget, but we were never permitted to reduce service. And so me coming in with that, they labeled me the cost cutter, the hatchet man, actually. And I didn't. But how did I develop that trust? Same thing I did in Fort Smith. I met with each department head at their location. I had them, I wanted a tour. I would, and I met with the employees as well, which is critical. So what, the first thing I can mention is when I went to the sanitation department, Fort Smith does its own sanitation, and owns its own landfill. And as I walked around, the director, department head was giving me a tour. And I went into their garage, where they service their vehicles. And I saw that they were using a pickup to hoist an engine out of a garbage truck. And, and people were just waiting around. And I looked at them and said, well, what are you missing? And they said, well, I need, we need a better device to move engines, and we need more tools because we don't have enough. And that was within my first two months of being hired. Every budget thereafter, when we would meet with the departments to review their budget requests and their new needs, I would always ask, do you need more tools? It's that developing and care for how people do their work. And understand, and getting to understand what they do and listening, that's key. And I, I've done that. I mean, I do have a habit. Again, I'm from New York City, so if given half a chance, I'd speak too quickly. And you'd hear some like a long, soft dog kind of accent come through. But that's, that's not the role of a city administrator or manager. It's to listen to the employees, listen to the department heads, making sure that they have the comfort through developing that trust, listening, meeting with them, supporting them, mentoring them, and employees, so that they can do the best job possible. And part of a city manager's role is to also protect them from various winds, political winds and changes. That's the role of a city manager. And to me, that's how you develop that trust. So in that first 90-day period, would be going to meet in each department, learning through a SWOT analysis, what are the strengths? What are the weaknesses? What are you looking for? What opportunities do you see? Because through opportunity, you can have initiative. And that, as I mentioned prior to the department heads, and for a big, and it's a big one. And I say, inside, it's huge. I want you to take initiative. I want you to look to see that there are better ways to do something. We don't say, well, we've always done it that way. That's not something. Unless they can prove that they've done the review, that that is indeed the best process possible. That's not something that needs to be said. But I also want to make sure that they have the ability to take the initiative. And if something goes wrong, fine, they can bring it back to me, at least one ma, means to resolve it, and we can work on it together. Because we're all human and mistakes are made. But it's how we answer those mistakes that also develops trust.
And the next question will be, describe how you build and lead high-performing teams. How do you develop leadership within your organization?
Several ways. First is trying to mentor and grow the existing staff. Helping them learn that they have the capability to be the best employee they can. Some employees, either through natural turnover or a desire to move on, some do move on. And I was fortunate enough, even though in the very beginning, it wasn't, I didn't see it as fortunate, but I had to replace four department heads, police chief, fire chief, utilities director, and the HR director. And so I was able to hire excellent department heads. And in fact, in my last review by the Fort Smith Board of Directors in November of last year, they said that I had man, I had put in place the best performing department heads that the city has ever known. So, again, that's through mentoring, helping people learn, making sure there are project, programs that, education incentives, that we can have our employees be trained, educated. Because we want them to be trained and educated so that they have the ability to leave, lead, leave, sorry. But that because of the culture that has been set, they don't want to.
Next, we will have Commissioner Lacoste.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Describe the kind of working relationship you aim to have with the city commission. What are your expectations, communication style, and guiding principles?
I'm accustomed to receiving phone calls from, in this case, the city commissioner, every day. General question, problems that are brought up. I prefer having that two-way communication. I get to know you, and you also get to know me. And that develops a good working relationship and a level of trust. I also like to meet at least monthly with each of you. Over lunch, over coffee, so we can discuss. I can learn what you're thinking, where you may have an issue. And what issues that I see that the city has at the moment, and that we can learn from each other. A city manager alone never has all the answers, but all together, we do. And so it's, it's, it's developing that level of, of trust through open communication, through meeting, the same way I would do it with the department heads. I prefer, and, and I prefer to have commissioners' difficult questions, important questions, come to me as the city manager or city administrator. But general questions of what date is, the hydrant's going to be flushed. I know that because that's going on now. What date is, was the hydrant's going to be flushed? Frankly, you don't need to ask me. That, you should be able to just call directly to the department head. So there's that. And sometimes, you know, lines, they're not fixed. But again, through mutual respect and a desire to, to move Battle Creek forward, we'll develop that line. But again, open communication, meeting, again, getting to know each other, develop that level of trust.
Okay, thank you. Next question is, Battle Creek's commission has prioritized modernizing internal operations and workforce structures. What experience do you have leading operational improvement or administrative transformation efforts?
When I arrived in, in Fort Smith, they were still using a 40-year-old ERP system. The first that went into effect in 1980. And one of the companies, ArcBest, which owns ABF Trucking, which I've seen around town, they have their own data unit called Datatronics. And so they had created, in Cobalt, this ERP system. And over 40 years, all the other cities and towns that were using it moved on to something better. The finance director said no, that she was never going to do it. Now, the finance, that finance director left before I was hired. Datatronics told us that, oh, by the way, we're shutting down this unit, and you've got two years to move on to a new system. And so we chose the Tyler Muna system. And of course, early on, that was not without its own issues, to put it politely. But when the decision was made, I met with all the department heads and all the administrative coordinators and secretaries, you know, the one, people that actually do the work in the system, and the finance department. And I, I created the theme, get on board. Hashtag get on board. Because I said, we don't have the typical amount of time within which to plan, review our business processes, and then implement the system. So we have to do it quickly and as efficiently as possible. And that's only going to get done if we all work together. And we did. We got the main part, including utility billing, online. There were problems with the general ledger portion, which led to 30, initially $35 million worth of expenses not hitting the GL. It took time, but that, that's endemic to any change in major system. In Reading, we finally had to get on to a new payroll system. And before I was hired, it had gone on for two years without any success. Once I was hired in Reading as finance director, a month later, I was also HR director. And three months after that, I was the city manager as well. And I said, so well, now I have all the hats that I'm wearing, we're going to get this done. And much the same way that I addressed the consent decree in Reading with weekly meetings, not only just to say, here's the status, but to say, here's the status, what's next? How are we moving forward? To push that ball forward. And sometimes it took a lot of push because, again, initially, before I came on board, people were afraid. Because if they stuck their, using the metaphor, sticking your head above the ground to say something, they typically had their head cut off. And that's why I go back to saying, I draw that large box to take initiative. When the employees who were on that project, IT, HR specifically, of course, payroll, felt confident enough that it was okay if we moved forward. And there could be a hiccup, that we could stumble. But as long as we were moving forward and we addressed it, and we were not paralyzed by overplanning and lack of action, we implemented that as well. Tyler Muna system, by and large, was a disaster when, I mean, it fixed a finding in our audit regarding fixed assets. But our audit was a year late, our first audit. And the second audit was six months late. The third audit was on time. And now we're back to getting the GFOA budget standard, and we have no issues with S and P. Again, you have to expect problems. You have to be willing to work together to address them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Morris?
Thank you. The city has adopted a multi-year capital improvement plan. How do you ensure capital priorities align with budget realities, equity, and long-term community goals?
First of all, the priorities are set by, primarily by the city commission. And so that's where I learn the priorities. I may see some of my own, and of course, I would bring that to the commission as a suggestion. Having a capital improvement plan is critical. You have to know, even if you don't have the resources for it initially, you have to know what you need. As an example, Fort Smith, when I came, we had two capital improvement plans. They were both for a dedicated sales tax, which is permitted in Arkansas, one for parks and one for the fire department. Of course, we were under a federal wastewater consent decree. And that consent decree is now budgeted to cost $625 million. And when I came on board, we didn't have a capital improvement plan for it. It was frightening. So having the plan first and foremost is knowing your basis, where you need to start. And then knowing the issues, the items, the topics that you need to include, which include diversity, equity, what the neighborhood councils are saying. And saying, all right, how are we going to move this forward? That helps determine the priority. And running it through the lens of professional staff and a professional manager helped refine that as it's submitted to the city commission. Of course, then the next hurdle is, how do we find the money for it? Again, in Arkansas, where you could not issue, you cannot issue debt. There's no such thing as general obligation debt. If you issue debt, it has to be voter approved and have a dedicated stream, either a fee or a sales tax or, or some type of fine revenue even. But in having those capital improvement plans, making them transparent, presenting them to the city, to the residents, making sure they're out there, getting the feedback, and then saying, here's a plan. You may not get it on the first go-round, but if you know that, hey, we have the ability and the need for dedicated revenue to fund these projects. And then you go, you go and request approval. Those that can be approved by the commission are asked to do so. Those that need to be voter approved, of course, would be brought to the voter. I was very pleasantly, I was happy to see that on August 5th, during the primary, that out of all of the requests for funding, all but one, except I think it was a library building, were approved. And again, that proved to me that this part of Michigan is willing to invest in itself to make, to do the projects that are necessary to move cities forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
How do you keep commissioners, community members, and staff informed on major initiatives? What tools or strategies have you found most effective for project transparency and accountability?
One project, one application. Technology is always your friend. Because that always gives you the ability to do much more with less. We implemented a Granicus project, a product called GovQA. We standardized on Granicus for our website, for our end communications primarily. Through that system, each department is able to send out messages, essentially a press release, and come forward and indicate what each department is doing. Whether it's Parks Department saying, here's our plan for the summer events, you know, movies in the park and, or work that's being constructed. And also status of projects. The biggest project in Fort Smith and in Reading were the wastewater consent decrees. Reading's financial situation was much worse. They were heading towards bankruptcy when I got there. Fort Smith was about 20 years behind almost. They still had money, but they were running out of it. So once we fixed the financial situation, because when I got there, they only had a $7 million fund balance, but I left them with $45 million. We were able to invest in products like GovQA that allowed us to disseminate a lot of information. Of course, the hurdle was asking people to please sign up. So we were still, you know, running after our residents to say, please sign up for this. Because you can find out so much information if there's a change in recycling, if there's an accident, if there's a road closure. We also used it to provide information regarding the consent decree, the status of water leak repairs, which was a big issue in, in Fort Smith. We use that not to desensitize our residents, but to provide the information that they had been requesting all along. And that's, that's really been something that's helped turn the tide, to realize that the city is working for them. to realize that the city is working for them and trying to do what's best for them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mayor. Battle Creek's advancing efforts in housing and development and zoning reform. What's the relevant experience that you bring that would approach you with these issues here in Battle Creek?
Fort Smith was awarded, and you may have, for those who attended last night's meet-and-greet, I mentioned about the foreign military sales project that Fort Smith was awarded. And that project is to train our allies to fly the F-35. That was a large project that I was in the center, along with the governor's office and our Chamber of Commerce. Two countries, Singapore and Germany, will have permanent missions located in Fort Smith. And other countries, Romania, Greece, Switzerland, Finland, Poland, will be coming to be trained. Positive side is that that's about a two-billion-dollar economic activity that will, by 2030, be in Fort Smith. The problem was inadequate housing stock. How would we go to build housing, sufficient housing, from people from various countries? Singaporeans that are used to living and want to live in apartments or condos where everything's done for them, others who want to come to the United States and experience the white picket fence and the garage and the backyard. So our banks, our builders, developers, you know, the real estate community, Chamber of Commerce, and the city, we worked together. And we've built about three thousand units of housing to make sure that the five thousand people that are coming, plus the concomitant growth that is projected to occur, that there is sufficient housing within the seventy-square-mile boundary of Fort Smith. It's working together. It's also repurposing existing land and housing stock, which is also what we've done, besides building new. Of course, Fort Smith has a bracked facility area like Fort Custer. Ours is seven thousand acres. And we did mixed-use commercial, industrial, and residential, because it was a blank slate for us. But we also looked on our north side of town, our older side, for homes that you could get very cheaply. We were also in the midst, before my departure, of setting up a land bank. So the city would go and purchase older homes, dilapidated homes, those that are in foreclosure, to try to then use city resources to see that they get repurposed. So that's my main. Redding was a little different. It was only nine square miles and a lot of row homes. Because if you've ever been to that part of Pennsylvania, you know there's hills upon hills upon hills. So, and Redding was an example of how not having a plan could have something go wrong. Because you could get a single-family row home, three-story, a lot of space, three thousand square feet. Because they were very deep but narrow. And people would come and buy them up for ten thousand dollars and over a weekend chop them up into three units illegally. And never went through our registration process, never went through our inspection process. Redding was chasing its tail. And so we do need to get out in front of that. But you can build new housing stock as well as renovating old housing stock to meet the needs.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next question is, the city is home to major corporations, industrial employers, and philanthropic institutions. How would you position the city to build trust in collaboration with these other partners to advance their shared economic and community goals?
When I was hired in Fort Smith, two of the directors who did not vote to hire me made it very clear that I needed to get out into the community. And that didn't mean just going to events and being seen. It was also being seen by our corporate citizens. Fort Smith is a major manufacturing hub. Its headquarters to ABB, ArcBest, OK Foods, which is a chicken processing plant, Georgia Pacific, Gerber, Nestle Gerber. And I made it my goal to get to meet each of the plant managers. I forgot Mars Pet Care as well, and Gladfelter Paper Products, and Umar X Guns. It was my goal to meet each of those companies. And they happened to be the large ones. I mean, there are plenty of smaller ones. To meet with them, to understand what they were facing, what issues they had with the city, what strengths we had, how could we work together? As an example, in September, October of 2016, just after being hired and getting on the job, I got a call from the president and CEO of OK Foods. The city had gone out to a neighboring business, and it was Ingersoll Rand Facility. And we needed to, they needed to do work on their fire suppression system. So we needed to turn off the water to the building. And that being on the north side of town, the older side of town, our ASBILs were a bit questionable. But I said, look, we cannot turn off the water to OK Foods. If we turn off that water line, will it shut off water to them? Nope, we're fine. We think we're fine. Well, on Friday night at nine o'clock, I get a phone call. Mr. Keffken, my plant is shut down. It will cost us one hundred thousand dollars per minute that we are shut down. I called the department, actually, I was running the department at the time. I didn't have a director yet. I called the staff, the deputy directors. I also said I would come out and meet him at the facility. I did. And I met with him, and he was shocked that I did that. And I said, you're our largest employer in the city. Of course, I'm going to meet with you. You bring a lot of economic activity, you provide a lot of jobs, and that's not something I can ignore. I made a promise to him. I said, we will build OK Foods a dedicated water line to make sure this never happens again. And it's what we did. That's on the business side. On the philanthropic side, there are several foundations in Fort Smith. One is the Deegan Foundation. They used to own one of the two hospitals in the city, and they sold it to a for-profit entity. With their about sixty-five to one-hundred million dollars, they decided to create a medical school. And so I worked with that foundation and the staff, the administration of the medical school, to make sure that, given its importance, again, also its economic impact, the fact that it was bringing people from around the country and around the world to Fort Smith, and the fact that the graduates would be training in the community and some of them were going to be remaining in the community, I made sure I worked with that precedent closely. So when they would do an expansion, I always offered to waive all code review and filing fees. They were a nonprofit, after all. And the average salary, the average salary of an employee at the medical school, from top to bottom, was a hundred thousand dollars. So it was very easy for me to say, I'll waive that small amount of money, knowing that by doing so, they were able to build and expand and provide greater economic activity and greater sales tax collections than what we had before.
All right, we have twenty-five minutes left, and we have five questions to go. I'm going to ask the vice mayor to do her first question, and then we're going to go to Commissioner LaCrosse.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome to Battle Creek.
Thank you.
Pleasure.
What specific professional experiences best prepare you to succeed in Battle Creek? How do your strengths align with our commission's strategic priorities?
My various experience from the city of New York, saving Redding from bankruptcy, leaving them with twelve million dollars, going to work at Berks County, which I had eighteen hundred employees, and they were, that was a well-run organization. But also learning to be the children and youth director, DYS. And then coming to Fort Smith and becoming an integral part of the community. And we developed a strategic plan. Fort Smith didn't have one, and neither did Redding. Developing those strategic plans, all of that has given me the experience to know that there are many things I don't still know, that I won't know until, if I'm offered the position, until I get to Battle Creek. But I have the thirty-five years' worth of experience knowing how to implement the goals and directions of the commission. Because most cities' strategic plans have many commonalities to them, including economic growth, in good cities, housing, assisting the homeless, increasing diversity, making sure that our employees have the necessary resources possible. And then there are specific things that, at the moment, I will honestly say that they're escaping me. But thirty-five years of various experience has given me the ability to tackle any issue or plan that needs to come my way.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner LaCrosse has a two-part question, or two questions that were compiled by city commissioner that cannot be here today.
Yes, sir.
And then Commissioner LaCrosse has a further question.
Okay, so please describe the strategies you would implement to ensure Battle Creek remains adaptable and successful in an ever-changing business environment, and outline your approach to evaluating, planning, and communicating future financing for major city projects.
Just before the end, just could you provide that question? I was thinking of the after part.
Please describe your strategy, please describe the strategies you would implement to ensure Battle Creek remains adaptable and successful in an ever-changing business environment.
That goes back to my statement before of, we've always done it this way. That is totally against adaptability and initiative. You have to have staff who are willing to take initiative and to be adaptable. And I've given this example, and I'll keep it as brief as possible. When I was first hired, there was a very nice pizzeria in the city of Fort Smith, and they wanted to put in a ventless pizza oven. And our building codes department denied it. I got the call from the business, which, again, that's my open-door policy. And they said, but they're used in California. I said, well, as I've mentioned this before, if it can be used in California, I don't see any reason why it can't be used in Arkansas. So I called the head of the building safety office down, and I asked, because that's first and foremost, just because you've heard some information doesn't mean you've been given the complete picture. And so I asked and said, so what about this? I received a phone call, and it said it was denied, but it can be used in California. Can you give me some background? And it was the, well, we've never done that before. And I went, okay. This was a moment to teach and to mentor. And I said, do me a favor. Please call the state of California. Please call a restaurant out in California that uses one and find, because knowing that their codes are going to be much stricter than most of the rest of the country, except for parts of the Northeast. I said, I think there may be a way that we can work on this. He did so. I said, when you get the information, come on back down. It's about a week later, he came down, and I had spoken to the pizzeria owner and said, this is what's happening. He came down and said, yeah, we can allow the ventless pizza oven to be installed. I said, that's great. So why don't you get with the building, the business owner, tell him the good news, and work out and make sure he can get the approval? Then about a week later, the same head of the building services comes down and says, well, he wants to put in a second one, and we've approved it. I said, that's great. Then he wanted a third one, and it was denied. And I got the phone call from the business leader, the business owner, and I said, I'll check into it. Spoke to the same head of business services, and he came back and said, the problem is now the amount of heat generated will exceed what's allowable. Now, that was a reasonable, correct, per code, international code issue. So I said, tell the business owner, and I called him back, also called the business owner and said, look, it's going to be denied because there are code issues now with the amount of heat that's generated that is not now being dissipated through a flu. And he understood that. So that's how it gets into being adaptable. You just have to ask a question, why? Why is that the case? You don't need to, you know, I've never been one to come in and say, hey, there's going to be a brand-new day. And I'm sorry, I'll try to be a bit brief. But there's a lot of strength going on here with its current senior management and with the employees. But sometimes you just need someone to ask, why is that the case? And is there a different way we can do that? And that's the start of the process. Now, regarding the financial modeling, of course, I remember that question, being a finance person. And again, that goes back to making sure that your financial house is in order, that you have sufficient revenues to cover your annual expenses, and that whatever you have in fund balance is always kept off to the side like a piggy bank. You don't, I don't start with fund balance, add revenues, subtract expenses. We didn't do that in the city of New York because we couldn't. I mean, each budget on a projection was always at least a billion to five billion dollars in the red. We always ended the year in the black. So you push that off to one, that's a rainy day fund. First, you need to make sure. And then you have the necessary technological resources, even if it's just a press release. But you put that information out there. And there are plenty, and I believe from my research, if I remember, there are technological applications that are used to put that information out there here in Battle Creek. There's always better ways to do that as well. You need to be able to make sure that you are providing all of that information. And there are plenty of applications that you can drill down and say, I want to see exactly how much we spent on water meters. And you can drill down to that code or that specific asset. So people themselves are empowered, residents are empowered, to look for that information.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
The last one. The city commission has tasked you with identifying efficiencies in both operational and personnel processes across city departments. Please describe the steps you would take to assess and recommend improvements, your criteria for evaluating efficiency, and how you would prioritize and time these efforts.
First, I would rely on my experience and having worked in various cities and assisted, as I did in where I lived in New Jersey, to do that exact same thing. You know, for sixteen years while at the city of New York, and for four of them working in the budget office of the Department of Health and the budget director, I was always tasked, and especially under Mayor Giuliani, we were always tasked, he was a great mayor, and that's as far as I'm going to say that. But to task, again, doing more with less. So we would always come and say, all right, the easiest way, we'd come and say, what can we shed? How can we combine services or combine the work under a similar employee, but also provide the resources necessary? So sometimes there was a cost. But by having the technological input and application or service added, we were able to, again, do more with less. My last job, I wore three hats, again, executive director for finance, IT, and HR. And when I left, they actually replaced me with two people. But that's because that was my goal, to constantly strive to do more and be more productive. There are ways. The best way is always to first ask the employees themselves, making sure they feel confident that they're not going to be out of a job if they volunteer the information. But to say, how could we do this? Is there a way that we can do it better? Since they're the ones who are actually doing the work, they're usually the best at being able to tell you how they can do something better. There's also a process, and it boils down to a noun verb summary. You break down each step in the process to a simple noun verb, staple or paper staple. And you say, do I need to do that step? How can I get around doing that step? And especially when there's a process that runs across different departments. Do we need to do that? And frequently, processes are set up because there's been a failure in a process, and something's been added. something's been added to make sure that failure doesn't happen again. Well, we don't have that luxury anymore. We have to make sure that we're doing the right thing as efficiently as possible. So as I, I mentioned in another setting, that in Fort Smith, if you wanted to pay your water bill but you didn't have it, you had to go into the back office so they could generate the bill, and then you had to walk to the front office to pay it. And that was set up because the internal auditor felt that that was the most safe way to do it. I said, no, it's not. Now that we have a new billing system, a new ERP system, that can all be done centrally with one person in collections, and then you can have the reports run, or flags set up in the system, that if somebody tries to adjust a bill, that it needs a level of approval before that actually gets done. But you can simplify the process. And by doing so, I was also able to help create a citizen service center, which has always been my goal wherever I've been, similar to the 3-1-1 system here, where people call in, and if they have a pothole, if they have a water leak, if they have an issue, they call one person. So they don't get caught in voicemail jail, or get sent to the wrong office, because that is the fastest way to make people feel negatively about their city. So long answer to, you always have to make sure you have the right technology in place to get the information out there, and the right processes to make sure your finances are in order.
Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. What closing comments would you like to leave us with regarding your candidacy and your vision for Battle Creek's future?
That's similar to a question that I ask when I'm interviewing department heads. And I ask them, what would, and I, I preface it with, there's no right or wrong answer. But tell me, what would you say if I told you right now that I don't think you're the best candidate for the job? Essentially, it's a similar question. And based on my research of Battle Creek, the city as a whole, the city government, this is an exciting city, the people believe in its city. You know, one of the candidates brought up the National Community Survey, but if you look at the metrics in that survey, only 290 people responded. Out of a city the size of Battle Creek, to me, that's not statistically significant. And if you looked at the demographics who responded, some of those demographics would tend to be more negative than positive. But in my speaking with people, and my, and using AI for my research as well, consistently, people like Fort Smith, I'm sorry, people like Battle Creek. People like living in the city. They want to fix housing. They want to make sure the economy continues. And also, work on the strategic plan, especially around housing and economic activity, to make sure that Battle Creek is a city that attracts people. And I believe that my 35 years of experience, as varied as it is, in our largest city to some of our smaller cities, in different states of different characters, and you don't get much different from New York to Arkansas, is to make sure that you're always doing the best you can, as transparently as possible, working collaboratively with your department heads and the staff, and making sure that they're given the resources in order to succeed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have any questions for us as a city commission about this opportunity?
Yes. It's actually for, I'm sorry, for each of you. What do you want to see in your next city manager? What attributes?
I really feel that we need to hire someone that has a good grasp of government, so we're not wasting time servicing the people of our community, and that we also implement some policies that will improve upon the service that we perform as a municipality.
Very good. Thank you.
Commissioner Morris and Commissioner Lacoste?
I would like to see somebody who is knowledgeable about the role that they will be working in, and then also somebody who is able to build good relationships with the staff and the community, because you will be leaning on them to complete the projects that we would like to do, so I would like to see some good relationships, and somebody who can relate to staff.
And that's, that's key, very key. Making sure that staff feel that they are valued and trusted in what they can do. Thank you.
I think the financial background is imperative. Communication is key and transparency. I think communication both with the commission and with residents is really important. Also, being out there in the community, attending events, really getting to know the people is a huge thing for me.
Before going on, it's interesting that one of the board of directors in Fort Smith, they had a question, and I said, oh, yeah, I can call that business owner, or I can get that done. And they said, this was relatively early on in my first three years, and they said, how did you get to know so many people? I said, I received the direction from the board that I was to do this, and so I did. And I relied on people, friends I got to know, and also similar entities. In this case, it would be the Chamber of Commerce, or here it would be BCU, going to neighborhood community meetings, council meetings. And that's how you get your, your face out there. And then you listen. And I've done that before, Reading, Berks County, Fort Smith, not so much in the city of New York, there's 330,000 employees, it's, you're one of, one of too many to, to do that.
Understandable.
Thank you.
I think the community involvement and communication, transparency, and as someone that has good moral standards, can really lead us to where we need to be at, working together.
Yes, it's, it, that is very important. The, in my prior position, there were people that had different sets of morals, and it was sometimes difficult, but I always kept my eye on what was important for the city of Fort Smith, not necessarily me.
Like, the financial wellbeing of the city is the most, one of the more important things, but also to be a brave leader, to take up the mantle and go forward and lead by example, lead from the front, and answer citizens' questions, and not be afraid to go back and, and, and be afraid of them, to work out a compromise or a solution to a problem.
Leading, my leadership style is one of, sometimes I say, leadership from behind, or leadership alongside. You know, I don't, I've never hired a department head, even going back to my time at the city of New York, I did have one where he sat in his office, and he delegated everything. And he was our IT director, and our network went down, and the commissioner called me, Commissioner of the Department of Investigation, and I, he yelled, but they were working on an important investigatory case. And I called the IT director and said, what's going on? Why didn't you call me? Oh, I didn't know. What do you mean you didn't know? Well, I didn't know that the network was down. Okay. Well, I'll have somebody take care of it. And I actually, and this wasn't the first instance, and I, I turned to him and said, you know, and it was a straight face, are you trying to get yourself terminated? Because by not taking the initiative, by not making sure that his small, and it was a small agency of only 360 people, I said, not making sure that your, your area of the agency, which is very critical, is operational, and you're having your deputy do all the work. And he looked at me for a moment, and he realized what I was saying, and he picked his, picked his socks up and did the right thing.
So I, I would echo the ability to communicate, both in a, in a written fashion and orally. I mean, we have a strong city manager here, and so frequently, if the, if the TV station or the newspaper is doing a story, they will go to the city manager. So I want someone that is able to represent the position of the city in a acceptable manner. I think one of the other things that I want to see in a city manager is someone who can, we can have a disagreement, but we don't need to be disagreeable.
Correct.
I think that it's easy to take things personally, and it's, if I disagree with you, it's not, I don't think you're a bad person, I just-
Have a different view.
Have a difference of opinion, and so having someone that recognizes that both up, so the city manager disagreeing with the commissioner, but then also the city manager disagreeing with city staff-
Right.
Or resident. I think that an ability to, to work together is key for our next city manager.
One of the directors that voted to appoint me, she was a former state legislator, and we would always agree to disagree, and we would have good, frank discussions. But she never trod on my authority as city administrator, and I never did anything to harm her position as a member of the board of directors. Regarding a city resident, in one of our growth areas out of Chaffee Crossing, our bract facility, we had widened one of our, initially it was a road to nowhere, and everybody complained about it. Now it's being widened to four lanes, and it's coming close to a group of homes that were built. And the homes should have had a 15, on their 15-foot easement, there should have had, been a landscaping buffer to, for safety and for noise. The developer didn't do that, so when the road was built two years ago, there were homeowners that complained. And I met with one of the homeowners, she developed a small group and, of homeowners, and they met with several of the board of directors, and they wanted a wall, it was only about a couple of hundred feet, but one of the walls you see along highways as a sound barrier, and it was going to cost the city, if we did it, about $300, $350,000. I said, no, no, we're not going to do that. We have other streets that have been widened over the past decade, that have encroached on people's front lawns, especially in the north side of town, which is our older and more diverse section. And I said, we've done nothing for them, why here? I told a woman this, and to be frank, she came back and said, well, we're different. So I, I smiled, I still told her no, but I found compromise. I said, even though it's private property, we'll work with you. And we offered, the streets director was with me, that we'd put up and replace a wooden fence with two wooden fences, and to help put in some boulders in front, so in case a car did go off the road, that it would protect them. And when I told her my story and what was going on, she initially despised me for saying no, but we found common ground, and we were able to move forward. So, I mean, it can be done. You can agree to disagree, but still find resolution.
Carl, we want to say thank you very much.
Thank you very much. It's been my pleasure. Thank you very much for inviting me to be a finalist, and, and for coming to Battle Creek. I've enjoyed the tour, and meeting Ted and the, the department heads, and Vicki, the city clerk, so.
All right, we're going to take a little pause, and we'll probably come down and thank you, and, and we're going to reconvene and do some work.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for your attention through all this process and diligence. It's been really something great to see, and I appreciate it. Last night, there was a community forum where there was a meet-and-greet with the candidates, and applaud you for that effort. I think it's actually, I, I summarized some of the themes that I picked up from those comments, and I think it's going to be great keeping your heads, and there's tremendous alignment with what I've heard from you from the moment we started. What came across was they're looking for somebody that's approachable and strong communicator, somebody that can be inclusive and, and work with the, all parts of the community. Second thing is vision and forward-thinking leadership, looking for somebody that'll push the community and the organization to be better and bigger and greater than it even is today. So having that strategic priority, I think that's, that's tremendous. The third thing is commitment to community engagement and collaboration. So that gets back to communication, listening, not just bringing people in after a decision is made, but help, asking them into the room when decisions are being made. Fourth theme was support for staff and the organizational culture, so somebody empowers staff and works with them rather than micromanages. And then the fifth is focus on community issues and placemaking. So really, that's about somebody that can work with all facets of the community towards, you know, making this place that, Battle Creek has such tremendous history, building on the strengths, and making it even a, a more attractive and competitive place. That's one thing maybe, I haven't heard so much, is, you know, I always looked at the job as, we were in friendly competition, but it was also a competition. We wanted to win every business, wanted to win every investment, wanted every resident to want to be here. So I think having that kind of attitude was something else that came across from the comments, so. That's my report.
Any questions of Clay?
Thank you.
All right, this is now commission comments time, and it's our opportunity to talk about our next steps. Does anyone have any questions or comments to make?
Mayor, I would just reiterate, too, that the commission does have the option, if they choose to, to, to go back into closed session for any kind of additional conversation or debrief if you want, or obviously, you could, you could adjourn.
And do we need a motion for the closed session?
Actually, I think in my conversation with the city attorney, we, we essentially recessed from our earliest closed session, so we can go back into it without a motion. And Bill, correct me if I'm wrong.
No, that's correct, yes.
All right. I, I would like to see us go back into closed session.
I would agree.
I think everyone's in agreement.
Closed-door session and we're going to recess or adjourn this meeting. Thank you very much.
(Applause)